At this point, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dixon City Council to order. And wanting to go ahead and give them their protocol.
Sean with it, Mr. President. Wayne Brad? Eddie Kojus?
Present.
Jimmy Doyle?
Present.
Aaron Timmons?
Present.
Paul Lawson?
Present.
Ebby Kickback?
Present.
If everybody will please join me with the legislative agents and Joe, do you have a... If not, Joe, do you mind giving the invoices?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's... My legislative agents.
Students of the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you again today thanking you for this beautiful day we've had. Our Father, we came to this meeting tonight to do things that will help this city, that will all join together and do what's right and agree if it hurts. We just want to thank you for the opportunity to do this. Be with the mayor and all the council, but they'll have a good day today and throughout this week. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Joe, thank you. I should welcome everybody. I talked to a couple of the council members throughout the day. There were some clerical oversights to the agenda. So before we adopt the event agenda, Paul, you had wanted to allow Mr. Donnie Ray to speak about the Rosebud and Elm issue. That is actually already on the agenda as far as that particular topic, so adding a speaker I don't think will be any particular issue. And Betty, we had... Betty and I were in talks last week. We have to make a recommendation for somebody to fill Dixon's seat for the Plasky County growth lines. And we need to have that recorded in the minutes as far as nomination and approval. And Betty, you have some of the four that is well correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I...
Do we have several or...
As far as all I know is the one.
Should I go ahead and give them?
You can here in just a few. The... So those are the only two things that we need to opt to adopt onto the agenda. And Marilyn is under... It's actually going to be under old business, but you're wanting to speak referencing some ordnance work that needs to get done, so we can get that squared away. We'll be talking in that once we get there. Does anybody have any objections to adding those two items onto the agenda? Okay, if there's no objections, I'm going to entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda as it's been modified.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor who are adopting an amended agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, this passes five to zero. Next thing we need to do is approve and ratified bills received.
I got some questions.
Duty of firework.
All right, page one. Next to the last entry, track entry guy, we got a bill at sixteen hundred forty-two dollars, all of the supply.
Part of that is a impact wrench. Milwaukee brand impact wrench used on water projects. What was the other part?
We had also a water heater of three ninety-two. The impact wrench is thirty-four hundred something. Okay. So that's a little seven. The rest of it was just, I guess, supplies.
All right, page two. All of the page, strike county union. We got another deal for thirteen hundred point eight dollars, seven six cents.
That was a run over from last month. That didn't get in in time, and it's run over on the...
Okay, on page four, we have the Triangle Environmental Science.
Page four, it's the next to the last entry. Okay. That is probably for the phase ones, that would conduct on properties that we're looking at.
It is, but if you go back here, on page eight, it's listed again.
Right, it was on... Two page ones was on two oh nine, Sixth Street, and the other was on three hundred.
So this is the two page ones that says the addresses. All right, page five, third entry down, we got S and D small feed. We got supplies and labor, eleven hundred dollars.
We had to fix one of the older tractors, farm tractors that we had, to put in, into service, pretty useful to the part-time guns.
Okay, right under that labor on law tractor, thousand dollars.
That'd be the other. As far as specifically, I don't know. Robbie will be better to answer the questions first, this is...
Okay, last page, page nine, we got Roxanne Good, water reed pump, three hundred six dollars.
What is it?
It's a water reed. Is this same one?
Absolutely, that was on... They had paid ahead. Those are the folks, the council always paying ahead, and then they decided to sell, I guess, and then what are the money, but I don't know.
Betty had a question. What page is that on? Page seven. Laurie S. Hopkins, CCR, that is certified court reporter.
Edit for...
Can you speak about it?
Well, we can talk about that. That is the depositions. That is our bill for having the depositions transcribed, redlined into paper format from all of the depositions that we sent Mr. Stumpy to for the civil lawsuits.
So it's not just that one?
That is the only bill that we have received. One thousand six hundred twenty-five.
That's what I have. It's seven days off, it's GMS. That's what I'm just having.
If any of you all would like to take a look at the invoice, just kind of at City Hall, specifically what that is in reference to. Are there any other questions about the bill?
Yes, page two. Down at the bottom. I know it's so simple, we purchased a water plant for twenty-one hundred dollars. They would pay almost seventy, seven hundred dollars for supplies. Because that does...
Okay, keep in mind that this year are the replacements from the fire that's pretty flat, so this is interest money that we're...
Oh, okay.
Essentially replacing the lost items.
Okay. Page seven. Man Cameron, four or two west here. How's he charging?
Hi, Paul, I can't see how you charge.
What comes from all of these?
That is where he uses his own vehicle, runs from here to Rala, or wherever he needs his supplies.
Have you ordered one? Nobody got an order?
Nothing.
He's traveling by the Orlando, unless somebody company or somebody up in the mountains. I think we got one that travels.
Let me check the ordinance on the poll. Is the man who may specify what employees versus electric officials can maybe have this?
Yeah, I was using a personal vehicle, responsible for the charge. Something happens to it, or if anyone exceeds it.
That'd be a legal question.
Possibly. He doesn't have... He's working for the city. It breaks down.
But I will say in the maintenance department's defense, that it will kind of show on vehicles on area, because I know one of them's been deadlines for about a year and a half. Because I looked it up, the windshield of it driving down Elm Street, pushing my hand out, and it would not pass a regular safety inspection, so that's been parked there since.
Same, same deal. Many other sections, tools in Elm, Elm I believe.
Thank you.
Six hundred dollars. Ian, how's he charging?
Ian, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not sure how the charges, by the hour, they give me a... I don't know how to charge. And I might be separate to count, and I won't look into that. Pesticide.
I mean, I don't know. One time he was charging, but everything he pulls it out, he serves him out, and that's what's on here. I just think we need to see him.
And I do have a voice, so it doesn't say how much it's now.
If needed, we can take those back and have them drive there. Bring the invoices out so we can take a look at it.
I'll make a suggestion, you know?
Sure.
I mean, just by adding this up, we'd be way ahead.
I know.
On the camera.
Oh, absolutely. As a fact, that's been one of the things that Robbie has been looking at, is the purchases on the tank. The problem is, the kind that we need is expensive. Joe, a good sewer camera for what we need?
If you run the push cameras, like probably they've been running, it's just a push camera, not a remote control camera. A push camera's probably neighborhood of good quality, record time, date, things like that. You're probably fifteen hundred or less, okay? The kind of camera that we had do our sewer line inspection prior to doing the sewer collection project, which actually records it to DVD, gives you coordinates, length of pipe, what you're seeing. They're motorized, they're four wheeled, they're four-wheel drive, it's like a little tonka trunk you put in, in an eight-inch pipe. They're going to be neighborhood of, you know, their neighborhood of probably fifty to a hundred thousand, or something like that. I mean, but those are... They do a lot of stuff. They do cleaning, jetting, they jet the pipe. There's a lot of features on there we probably wouldn't use, okay?
So that may be something we want to incorporate in this project.
And it... Well, yeah, that would be a major purchase, and I don't know, there's not a lot of... Most companies own them privately, you know what I mean? They're in the business of camera and sewer line, main sewer main, eight-inch, ten-inch sewer line.
Something purchased through the sewer...
You could. I don't think we need a model quite like that. That's the upper end of sewer cameras.
And would they have to be licensed?
That comes with software, everything. If you notice, the guys that have done the project for us when we camered our lines, they camered the lines, rain, snow, it didn't matter. And all the controls are interior, so they're sitting in a trailer, and they're able to run the cameras twenty-four seven.
Thank you. That is the...
There's some chairs over there, Betty.
I'll take you something, Paul. Do you want to do the budget?
Thank you.
Seventeen incorporated. I didn't mean to rent you out.
You go ahead.
We're getting your safe.
That is okay.
And we sit there?
You go ahead.
Okay.
This is a final bill.
Do we have a camera system?
Presently, no. We will... There will be one. Just if... For everyone, I believe, in the house as far as the cameras. Instead of contracting out for a hundred and seventy-one dollars a month with the monitor, with the software available, we can do it ourselves. With some sort of state financial advice. Any other discussion on bills? If there is not any discussion, further discussion, entertain a motion to bail out. The motions are approved and ratified bills received. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Epp. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes five to one. Counselor Watson, the motion. Next thing, ordinance review. We have went through pretty significant ordinances. We have proven amounts of... Oh, thank you, Joe. That's right over. We do need to backtrack. We need to approve the amounts of the last meeting. We have got to be April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. And I did the twenty-first, special meeting. The only thing we're doing at this point, with this meeting minutes, is making sure that the minutes are accurate as far as changing the decisions. Don't lean this side or the other. We can't do that, but if the information's inaccurate, then yes, you can change. We have a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes. Jim, do we have a second? Seconded by Merrill. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes five to zero. Now moving on. We have one, two, three, four ordinances we'd like to... Yes, we have copies for the public. We have four. Ordinance five five six, referred to as the Culver ordinance. Five five seven is the...
Five five six, yes.
Is the nuisance ordinance. Five five eight is the recommendation bond from DNR that we spoke about at the last time. And five five nine is the authorization for the Maricay enter into a contract with court money for the collection of fines for the Dixon news report. And do we have copies for the public? Six, seven, eight, nine. We can go through these just in numerical order. We will have to roll over on the form. There's been a lot of discussion on these. You'll notice in ordinance five five seven, that is a lot of the language that council members had expressed with Mr. Stumpy, that they've received from the constituents, has been redacted. And this is the model ordinance that we have received from NML, is that correct? The first form that we're going to take a look at is ordinance number five five six for the installation of the Vice Mail Driveway Culverts within city limits of Dixon at this point. Do we have copies for the public? At this time, I would either entertain a motion to read it in short form, which is reading the caption, and or reading it in its entirety, and going through the whole thing. Because we have copies for the public, we can review these in short form and proceed with the vote.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, at this time.
Is creating in short form, since everyone has copies?
We do have a motion to read ordinance five five six in short form. Do we have a second?
One second.
This is seconded by Epp. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Three two, this is three two. This is for the first reading of the ordinance for installation for the Culver ordinance. Yes.
And the copy is here. It's on a lot of back, besides the parts they are, so to be true by communication, checks that part shape.
Okay.
Does people contact the office?
This is an ordinance creating a standard installation and replacement of driveway culverts within city limits of Dixon, Missouri. Whereas the city council desires to amend the municipal code of the city of Dixon, Missouri, parentheses code, to codify the current business practice of driveway culvert installation and replacement. At this point, we would need a motion for a second, Eddie.
I'll make a motion for a second.
Is that in short form or long?
Short form.
We have a motion for short form. Reading of this for the second time. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Marilyn, seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
But I think your ordinance has to be previewed, be available for preview to the public prior to the time the meeting's held, not at the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Stumpy? That's all right, Eddie.
Thank you.
Either way, we can read every one, we can read these all in long form, and read them all twice, and that... I don't think we have to... I hope you read it in long form, maybe you can... If you read it in long form, you don't have to provide copies. If you provide copies, then you can read it in short form.
Everyone has a copy. Everyone has a copy that would work.
Before we proceed, let our attorney weigh in. Section seven nine, one three oh one one. Ordinance shall be styled, given or handed to the city of Alderman. Ordinance shall be passed except the bill. No bills become ordinance unless it is... On its final passage, a majority of the members shall be elected for it, shall vote for it. Eyes and names be entered into the journal. Every quote proposed ordinance shall be introduced to the Board of Alderman in writing, shall be read by title, or if two times prior to passage, both readings may occur at the single meaning of the Board of Alderman. If the proposed ordinance is read by title only, copies of the proposed orders shall be made available to the public inspection prior to the time... Prior to the time the bill is under consideration by the Board of Alderman. The bills shall become ordinance until it shall have been signed. You'd know, ahead of time, some occasions, just right now. Good.
Otherwise, we read the whole thing?
Otherwise, we read five five six, five five seven, five five eight, and five five nine.
That's at one ten, all sudden, say the code.
That's what I just read. Now, the, the ordinance five five six is over culvert ordinance. Five five seven's nuisance. Five five eight is the DNR ordinance that we had presented to us last time, Mr. Doyle had, and five five nine is the agreement to, for court money to collect or report things online. At this point, we can read any of all of these, or a part of them, or you can table, you can go through a table each one, or you can vote on. But that is entirely up to you, so.
I would, I'm making a motion to table all of them, so if they have an opportunity to read all of them, and we have to vote.
Well, we usually read it, if it's, if they want to look at it themselves, if they don't hear it, see, but if they hear it and we read it.
We do, uh, we do have a motion to read five five six in its entirety. Is, do we have a second to read ordinance five five six in its entirety? We have read ordinances in their entirety, applies to the same. So is that a second, can we read it in its entirety?
I'll say yes, but I don't know. To say yes to, to read it, or to not read it?
Can you please clarify your motion?
I think, yeah, I think so.
Right, so you want me to go ahead and read this, or go through and read this twice?
No, I don't think we have to. That's my question. But what he's saying is, we're gonna have to either read it twice, or either let them take it home, or you know, I think a lot of the city ball, so I have a motion already to read it. But if we read it, we won't have to read it at the same time. We need a second.
State losses, seven nine, one three oh, says you can read a bill in its entirety two times, and then, it can be voted.
Is this on just this ordinance or all of them?
This is just on this ordinance.
This one right here.
Okay. Do we have a second, from Jimmy? Okay. This is, we're gonna address these ordinances one at a time.
Jimmy, you say.
An ordinance creating a standard for installation and replacement of driveway culverts within city limits of Dixon, Missouri. Whereas the city council desires to amend the municipal code of the city of Dixon, Missouri, to codify the current business practice of driveway culvert installation and replacement. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Dixon, Missouri, as follows. Section one, and section five zero five, three one zero, and the code of chapter five oh five, five oh five, read as follows. Section five oh five, point three one oh, general installation practices for culverts, subsection eight, or section eight. When it is determined that a culvert is desired at a residential property within the city limits of Dixon, Missouri, and no driveway culvert currently exists on said property, the following procedures will be followed. The driveway culvert will be installed by the city of Dixon, Missouri, and the cost of the installation will be paid for by the city of Dixon, if the homeowner purchases all the materials for the installation in accordance with the standards and requirements of the city engineer. Or, section B. The city of Dixon will pay for the materials of said driveway culvert, and the homeowner will pay for its installation and its inspection by the city engineer, to make certain it is, it is installed in accordance with what the city engineer's standards. Subsection B, that's the subsection B, B. Once a driveway culvert has been installed at a residence, it shall be the responsibility of the city of Dixon to maintain and replace the driveway culvert, should it need maintenance and repair. If the driveway culvert is currently installed in concrete, it shall be the homeowner's responsibility to pay for the encasement of the driveway culvert in new concrete, should the driveway culvert need repair or replacement. This was entered in. Okay. That is the first full reading. At this time, we can.
Need to clarification, I want to call it, please. Mr. Stumpf, you want to read it? Now, the way I take this is, when it's said a once driveway culvert has been installed at a residence, does that include the ones in the ground right now?
Yes.
The ones that's in the ground right now?
I just wanna get it in the minutes, get clarified that that's what it means. That is my interpretation, as well, of the, the culverts that are in the ground right now would be considered installed at a residence, and should, if this were to pass, would be the responsibility of the city of Dixon to maintain and replace the driveway culvert, should it need maintenance and repair. With the exception of, in case of, uh, at this time, do we have a, uh, motion to read this for the second time? If there is not a motion to read it for the second time, this bill will not pass.
I'll make a motion to read the second, read it second time.
Okay, we have a motion to read, uh, ordinance number five five six. This has been segmented by Marilyn. All those in favor, please raise your hand. In the post, this passes five oh. An ordinance creating a standard for the installation and replacement of driveway culverts within city limits of Dixon, Missouri. Whereas the city council desires to amend the municipal code of the city of Dixon, Missouri, to codify the current business practice of driveway culvert installation and replacement. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Dixon, Missouri, as follows. Section one, and section five zero five, three one zero, and the code of chapter five oh five, five oh five, read as follows. Section five oh five, point three one oh, general installation practices for culverts, subsection eight, or section eight. When it is determined that a culvert is desired at a residential property within the city limits of Dixon, Missouri, and no driveway culvert currently exists on said property, the following procedures will be followed. The driveway culvert will be installed by the city of Dixon, Missouri, and the cost of the installation will be paid for by the city of Dixon, if the homeowner purchases all the materials for the installation in accordance with the standards and requirements of the city engineer. Or, section B. The city of Dixon will pay for the materials of said driveway culvert, and the homeowner will pay for its installation and its inspection by the city engineer, to make certain it is, it is installed in accordance with the city engineer's standards. Subsection B, that's the subsection B, B. Once a driveway culvert has been installed at a residence, it shall be the responsibility of the city of Dixon to maintain and replace the driveway culvert, should it need maintenance and repair. If the driveway culvert is currently installed in concrete, it shall be the homeowner's responsibility to pay for the encasement of the driveway culvert in new concrete, should the driveway culvert need repair or replacement. This was entered in. Okay. That is the first full reading. At this time, we can.
Need to clarification, I want to call it, please. Mr. Stumpf, you want to read it? Now, the way I take this is, when it's said a once driveway culvert has been installed at a residence, does that include the ones in the ground right now?
Yes.
The ones that's in the ground right now?
I just wanna get it in the minutes, get clarified that that's what it means. That is my interpretation, as well, of the, the culverts that are in the ground right now would be considered installed at a residence, and should, if this were to pass, would be the responsibility of the city of Dixon to maintain and replace the driveway culvert, should it need maintenance and repair, with the exception of, in case of, uh, at this time, do we have a, uh, motion to read this for the second time? If there is not a motion to read it for the second time, this bill will not pass.
I'll make a motion to read the second, read it second time.
Okay, we have a motion to read, uh, ordinance number five five six. This has been segmented by Marilyn. All those in favor, please raise your hand. In the post, this passes five oh. An ordinance creating a standard for the installation and replacement of driveway culverts within the city of Dixon, within the city limits of Dixon, Missouri. Whereas the city council desires to amend the municipal code of the city of Dixon, to codify the current business practice of driveway culvert installation and replacement. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Dixon, Missouri, as follows. Section one, and section five oh five, point three one zero, and the code, code of chapter five oh five, be read as follows. Section five oh five, point three one oh, general installation practices for culverts. When it is determined that a culvert is desired at a residential property within the city limits of Dixon, Missouri, and no driveway culvert currently exists on said property, the following procedures will be followed. The driveway culvert will be installed by the city of Dixon, Missouri, and the cost of the installation will be paid for by the city of Dixon, if the homeowner purchases all the materials for installation in accordance with the standards and requirements of the city engineer. Or, the city of Dixon will pay for the materials of said driveway culvert, and the homeowner will pay for its installation and its inspection by the city engineer, to make certain it is, it is installed in accordance with the city engineer's standards. Once a driveway culvert has been installed at a residence, it can be the responsibility, it shall be the responsibility of the city of Dixon to maintain and replace a driveway culvert, should it need maintenance and repair. If the driveway culvert is currently installed in concrete, it shall be the homeowner's responsibility to pay for the encasement of the driveway culvert in new concrete, should the driveway culvert need repair or replacement. This has been read for its second time in its entirety. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to vote on this measure. This will be, will be a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to.
We have a motion to, uh, vote on ordinance number five five six. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Doyle. All those in favor, raise your hand. Roll call, both, please.
Wayne Brown. Nate Joneses. Jimmy Doyle. Marilyn Timmons. Paul Watson. Effie Gubot. That's the five, Joe, sir.
I have just signed ordinance, bill five five six into law for the city of Dixon.
Excuse me. I thought five five seven was culvert. Did I misunderstand you?
I'm sorry?
The, the one we just signed in, was that five five six or five five seven?
Five five six.
Five five six, okay.
Five five seven is an ordinance.
A nuisance.
The code, or referred to as a nuisance ordinance.
Okay.
At this point, council members, I need to know, do you wanna table this, or do you want me to go through a complete reading?
I'm gonna make a motion where you make this one available to the public.
Okay. We have a motion to table, uh, ordinance number five five seven, so the next meeting, give the public an opportunity to read this. Uh, this has been segmented by Councilman Watson. Uh, roll call vote. Nate Joneses.
No.
Uh, Jimmy Doyle.
Yes.
Marilyn Timmons.
No.
Paul Watson.
No.
Effie Gubot.
Yes.
It's two yeas and three noes. Just to say that vote count again. Two yeas, two yeses, three noes. Paul, you voted no. No to table, or no to read?
I voted to, wait.
To, to table it, okay, I wanted to clarify that. So, we need, we need to, our votes, honestly. Because Effie, Effie voted to table.
Did you table it, or?
No.
Because the motion on the, the motion on the floor was to.
Go ahead and vote.
Jimmy made a motion, Paul segmented, to table this.
Oh, not to read it.
Right now, the vote is.
Yes.
Right now, it's two yeses, three noes.
Yeah.
Five five seven is tabled until the next meeting. Ordinance number five five eight, this is the, Joan, can you, uh.
I don't want him to read it.
This ordinance here was the recommendation from DNR, specifically doubling, uh, sewer drains, private sewage disposal, the installation and connection to our sewers, and the discharge of the waters from private residents to, uh, add into the public. As we discussed last month, this gives us the opportunity to, uh, this is the opportunity to act in the event of an environmental hazard. If, if a individual or property is discharging what we deem to be an environmental hazard to the community, then we have action set forth through this ordinance to address that in a timely fashion. And this is, uh, this is in the recommended format from DNR that they gave us without any changes, uh, with the exception of the inclusion of our names. At this point, uh.
There has a, with one paragraph, I bet they have, uh, just one to the board, potentially, uh, have a party to look to afford. You had, uh, you had that, that one paragraph.
It was what?
The optional paragraph.
So that was an optional paragraph. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, table this for a public review, or, or start the readings.
I would like to make a motion to start the readings for five five eight.
Okay, we have a motion to read five five eight in its entirety. Do we have a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any votes? This passes five to zero. An ordinance regulating the use of public and private water, or, excuse me, sewers, from handling, storage, and sale of produce. Section six, industrial waste, shall mean liquid waste from industrial manufacturing processes, trade, or business as distinct from sanitary sewage. Section seven, natural outlet, shall mean the outlet into the water force, pond, ditch, lake, or other bodies of surface or groundwater personally, shall mean any individual, firm, company, association, society, corporation, or group. Section nine, pH, shall mean the logarithm of the reciprocal of the weight of a hydroelectricity in grams per liter of solution. Section ten, properly shredded garbage, shall mean the waste from the preparation, cooking, and dispensing of food that have been shredded in to such a degree that all particles will be carried freely under the flow and dishes normally prevailing in public sewers with no particle greater than a half inch, one point two seven centimeters, in any day. Section eleven, shall mean a sewer in which all owners of the abutting properties have equal rights and is controlled by a public authority. Section twelve, sanitary sewer, shall mean a sewer which carries sewage to which storm surface and groundwater are not intentionally admitted. Section thirteen, sewage shall mean a combination of the water-carrying waste from residence buildings, business buildings, institutions, and industrial establishments together with such ground, surface, and swimming water as being present. Section fourteen, sewage treatment plant shall mean any arrangement of devices and structures used for treating sewage. Section fifteen, sewage work shall mean all facilities for collection, pumping, treating, and disposing sewage. Section sixteen, sewer, shall mean the pipe or conduit carrying sewage. Section seventeen, shall, is mandatory, may, is permissible. Such an eighteen, slug shall mean any discharge of water, sewage, or industrial waste which in concentration of the constituent or in quality of flow exceeds for any period of duration longer than fifteen minutes, more than five times the average twenty-four hour concentration will close during normal operation. Section nineteen, storm drain, sometimes termed storm sewer, shall mean a sewer which carries storm and surface waters and drainage and undiluted cooling water but excludes sewage and industrial waste. Section twenty, superintendent, shall mean shall mean solids that either float on the surface of or are in suspension on water, sewage, or other liquids and which are removable by laboratory filtering. Section twenty-two, water force, shall mean a channel in which water which a flow of water occurs either continuously or intermittently. Article two, section one, it shall be unlawful for any person to deposit, to place, deposit, or permit, to be deposited in any unsanitary matter on a public or private property within the city of Dixon or in any area under the jurisdiction of said city in human or animal excrement, garbage, or objectionable waste. Section two, it shall be unlawful to discharge any natural outlet within the city of Dixon. Or in any under area, any area under the jurisdiction of said city in sewage or other polluted waters except where suitable treatment has been provided in accordance with subsequent provisions of this ordinance. Section three, except as hereinafter provided, it shall be unlawful to construct or maintain any privy vault, septic tank, cesspool, or other facility intended or used for the disposal of sewage. Section four, the owner of all houses, buildings, and properties used for employment, recreation, or other purposes situated within the city of Dixon, in abutting on any street, alley, or right-of-way in which there is now located, or may in the future be located, a public, sanitary, or combined sewer of the city is hereby required to expense to install suitable total facilities therein, and to connect such facilities directly to a proper public sewer in accordance with provisions of this ordinance within sixty days after the date of official notice provided said public sewer is within one hundred feet or thirty point five meters of the property line. Article three, section one, where a public sanitary or combined sewer is not available under sewage not available under provisions of article two, section four, building sewer shall be connected to a private sewage disposal system complying with the provisions in this article. Section two, before commencement of construction of a private sewage disposal system, the owner shall first obtain written permit signed by the superintendent. The application for such permit shall be made in the form furnished by the city of Dixon, which the applicant shall supplement by any plans, specifications, or any other information as are deemed necessary by the superintendent. The permit and inspection fee of fifty dollars and zero cents shall be paid to the city of Dixon at the time the application is filed. Section three, permit for private sewage disposal system shall not become effective until the installation is completed to the satisfaction of the superintendent. He shall be allowed to inspect the work at any stage of the construction, and in any event, the applicant for the permit shall notify the superintendent when the work is ready for final inspections before any underground portions are covered. The inspection shall be made within seventy-two hours of receipt of notice by the superintendent. Section four, type, capabilities, location, and layout of private sewage disposal system shall comply with all recommendations of the Department of Public Health of the state of Missouri. No permit shall be issued for any private sewage disposal system employing a subsurface soil absorption facilities where the area of the lot is less than forty thousand square feet. No septic tank or cesspool shall be permitted to discharge into any natural outlet. Section five, at such time as a public sewer becomes available to the property served by the private sewage disposal system as provided in article two, section four, a direct connection shall be made to the public sewer system. In compliance with this ordinance, any septic tanks, cesspools, and similar private sewage disposal facilities shall be abandoned, filled with suitable material. Section six, the owner shall operate and maintain private sewage disposal facilities in a sanitary manner at no expense to the city of Dixon. Section seven, no statement contained in this article shall be construed as interfering with additional requirements that may be imposed by the health officer. Section eight, when a public sewer becomes available, the building shall be connected to said sewer within sixty days, and the private sewage disposal system shall be cleaned of sludge and filled with suitable material. Article four, section one, no unauthorized person shall uncover, make any connections with, or open into, use, alter, disturb, any public sewer or perish prudence thereof without first obtaining written permit from the superintendent. Section two, there shall be two prices of building sewer permits, one for residential and one for commercial. And the service to establishments service to establishments producing industrial waste. In either case, the owner or his agents shall make application on special form provided by the city of Dixon. The permit shall be supplemented by plans, specifications, or other information considered pertinent in the judgment of the superintendent. Receive a permit and inspection fee of fifty dollars for a residential or commercial building, and one hundred dollars for industrial building. Sewer permit shall be paid to the city of Dixon at the same time the application is filed. Section three, all costs and expenses incident to the installation and connection of the building sewer shall be borne by the owner. The owner shall indemnify the city of Dixon, any loss or damage made directly or indirectly due to the installation of the building sewer. Section four, a separate and independent building sewer may be provided for every building except where one building stands at the rear of another on the interior lot, and no private sewer is available or can be constructed to the rear of the building through an adjoining outlet. Fourth yard driveway, the building sewer from the front of the building may be extended to the rear of the building, and the whole considered as one building sewer. Section five, old building sewers may be used in conjunction with new buildings only when they are found on examination and test by the superintendent to meet all requirements of this ordinance. Section six, the size, strength, and alignment materials of construction of building sewer and methods being used in excavating, placing, pipe, jointing, testing, backfilling, or trench shall conform to the requirements of the Building and Plumbing Code or other applicable rules and regulations of the city of Dixon, Missouri. In the absence of code provisions and the amplification thereof, the materials and procedures set forth in the appropriate specifications of the ASTM and WPF manual to the practice number nine shall apply. Section seven, whenever possible, building sewer shall be brought to the building in an elevation below the basement floor. In all buildings in which the drain is too low to let gravity flow to the public sewer, sanitary sewer should be carried by such building drain shall be lifted by an approved means and discharged into the building sewer. Section eight, the connection of a building sewer into the public sewer shall conform to the requirements of the Building and Plumbing Code or other applicable rules and regulations of the city. The procedures set forth in appropriate specifications of ASTM and WPF manual, practice number nine, all connections shall be made gas tight, motor tight. Any deviation from the described procedures and materials must be approved by the superintendent before installation. Section nine, the applicant for the building sewer permit shall notify the superintendent when the building sewer is ready for inspection in connection to the public sewer. The connection shall be made under the supervision of the superintendent or his representatives. Section ten, all explanations, the building sewer installation shall be adequately guarded with barricades and lights as to protect the public from hazards. Streets, sidewalks, parkways, and other public property disturbed and forced, the work shall be restored in a manner satisfactory to the city of Dixon. Section five, article five, section one, no person shall discharge any storm water, surface water, groundwater, roof runoff, subsurface drains, including interior and exterior foundation drains or other sources of surface runoff or groundwater, uncontaminated cooling water, or untold industrial process waters into any sanitary sewer. Section two, storm water and all other untolued drainage shall be discharged to such sewers as are specifically designed as combined sewers or storm sewers or to a natural outlet as approved by the superintendent. Industrial cooling water or untolued process waters is discharged on approval of the superintendent to a storm water, combined sewer, or natural outlet. Section three, no discharge no person shall discharge or cause to be discharged any of the following described waters or waste through any public waters. Any gasoline, benzene, gas, fuel oil, or other flammable or explosive liquid, solid, or gas. Any waters or waste containing toxic or poisonous solids, liquids, or gases in sufficient quantity either singly or by interaction with other wastes to injure or interfere with any sewage treatment process constitute a hazard in the receiving waters of the sewage treatment plant, including but not limited to cyanides in excess of two milligrams of Ca in the waste as discharged to the public sewer. Any waters or waste having a pH lower than five point five or having any other corrosive property capable of causing damage or hazard to structures, equipment, or personnel in sewage works. Solid or vicious substances in quantities or of such size capable of causing obstruction to low-end sewers or large parents with improper operation of the sewage works, such as, but not limited to, acids, cinders, mud, straw, shavings, metal, glass, rags, feathers, tar, plastic, wood, underground garbage, cold blood, bunch maneuver, hair, punching and drills, egg dishes, cups, valve containers, etc., either full or ground by garbage grinders. Section four, portions of discharge or cause to be discharged of the following described substances, materials, waters, or waste, if it appears likely in the opinion of the superintendent. That such waste can cause harm to either the sewers, to a strict process or equipment, have an adverse effect on the receiving stream, or can otherwise endanger life, plan, public property, or cause damage in the form of a wound that has to the acceptability of these wastes, the superintendent will give consideration to such factors as the quantities of the certain waste in relation to the flows and velocities of the sewers, materials of the construction of the sewers, nature of the process, capability of the sewage treatment plant, degree of treatability of waste in the treatment plant, and other personal factors. The substances are permitted. Any liquid or vapor having a temperature higher than a hundred and fifty degrees or sixty-five degrees Celsius, and water or waste containing fats, wax, grease, or oils, whether emulsified or not, in excess of one hundred milligrams per liter or containing substances which may solidify or become vicious at temperatures between thirty-two degrees and one hundred and fifty degrees Fahrenheit, that's zero degrees and sixty-five degrees Celsius. Any garbage that has not been properly shredded, installation and operation of any garbage grinder equipped with a motor of three-four horsepower or grinder shall be subject to review and approval of the superintendent. Any waters or waste containing a strong acid, iron, pickling waste, or concentrated planting solutions, whether neutralized or not. Any waters or waste containing iron, chromium, copper, zinc, or similar objectionable or toxic substances, or waste exerting an excessive chlorine requirement to such degree that any material received in the composite sewage at the sewage treatment or exceeds the limit established by the superintendent for such materials. Any waters or waste containing phenols, or other taste or odor-producing substances in which concentrations exceeding limits may be established by the superintendent as necessary after treatment of the composite sewage, to meet requirements of state, federal, or other public agencies, the jurisdiction for such discharge to the receiving waters. Any radioactive waste or isotopes of such half-life or concentration may exceed limits established by the superintendent in compliance with state and federal regulations. Any waters or waste having a pH in excess of nine point five, materials which inert or cause, exerted cause, unusual concentrations of inert suspended solids such as, but not limited to, overzirk, lime slurries, and lime residues, or dissolved solids such as, but not limited to, sodium chloride or sodium sulfate, excessive discolligation, such as, but not limited to, dye waste and vegetable tanning solutions. Unusual BOD chemical oxygen demand or chlorine requirements in such quantities as to constitute a significant load on the sewage treatment works. Unusual volumes of flow or concentration of waste constitute slugs as defined herein. Waters or waste containing substances which are not meetable to the treatment or reduction of the sewage treatment process employed or are meetable to treat only to such degree that the sewage treatment tank need fluid, that outmeet requirements of the other agencies having jurisdiction over the discharge to the receiving waters. Any waters or waste having one, a five, BOD, a five to a BOD greater than three hundred parts per million by weight, or two, containing more than three hundred and fifty parts per million by weight of suspended solids, or three, having average daily flow greater than two percent of the average flow of the jurisdiction sewer system, shall be subject to review by the superintendent. Where necessary, in opinion of the superintendent, the owner shall provide at his expense such preliminary treatment as may be necessary to reduce the biochemical oxygen demand to three hundred parts per million by weight, two, reduce the suspended solids to three hundred and fifty parts per million by weight, or three, control the quantities and rates of discharge of water, the waste, plan specifications, and any other pertinent information related to the proposed preliminary treatment facilities shall be submitted for the approval of the superintendent, and no construction of the facilities shall be commenced until set accruals are obtained in writing. Section five. Any waters or waste or discharge or are proposed to be discharged to public sewers, which the waters contain the substances or possesses the characteristics enumerated in section four of this article, which in the judgment of the superintendent may have a deleterious effect on the sewage works, processes, equipment, receiving waters, or which otherwise create a hazard to life, that constitute a public nuisance, the superintendent may reject the waste, require pre-treatment to an acceptable condition, the discharge into public sewers, require control over the quantities and rates of the discharge, and require payment to cover the added cost for the handling and treating of the waste not covered by the existing taxes, sewer charges, and other provisions of section ten of this article. If the superintendent permits the pre-treatment or equalization of waste flows, the design and the installation of the plants and equipment shall be subject to review and approval of the superintendent and subject to the requirements of all applicable codes, ordinances, and laws. Section six. Grease, oil, and sand interceptors shall be provided when, in the opinion of the superintendent, they are necessary for the proper handling of liquid waste, sand, and other harmful ingredients, except that such interceptors shall not be required for private living quarters or dwelling units. All interceptors shall be of type and capacity approved by the superintendent, and shall be located as to readily and easily accessible for the cleaning and installation. So, where preliminary treatment or flow equalizing facilities are provided, for any waters or waste, they shall be maintained continuously and satisfactory in effect of operation by the owner at his expense. Section eight. When required by the superintendent, the owner of any property serviced by a building sewer carrying industrial waste shall install a suitable control manhole together with such necessary meters and apparatuses in the building sewer to facilitate observation, sampling, and measurement of the waste. Such manholes, where required, shall be accessibly and safely located, and shall be constructed in accordance with plans approved by the superintendent. Manhole shall be installed by the owner at his expense and shall be maintained by use so that safe, to be safe and accessible at all times. Section nine. All measurements, tests, and analysis of the characteristics of waters and wastes to which reference is made in this ordinance shall be determined in accordance with EPA approved edition of the Standards Methods for Evaluation and Examination of Waste, Water and Waste Water, published in the American Public Health Association, and shall be determined at the control manhole provided, or upon suitable samples taken at said control manhole. In the event that no special manhole has been required, the control manhole shall be considered to be the nearest downstream manhole in the public sewer to the point at which the building sewer is connected. Sampling shall be carried out customarily, accepted methods, to reflect the effect of constituent upon the sewage works and to determine the existence of hazards to life, land, and property. This particular analysis involved will be determined whether a twenty-four hour composite of all outfalls or a premise is appropriate, or whether a grab sample or samples should be taken. Normally, but not always, BOD and suspended solid analysis are obtained from twenty-four hour composites, while outfalls, whereas pH analysis are determined from periodic grabs and grab samples. Ten. No state contained in this article shall be construed as pertaining any special agreement or arrangement between the City of Dixon and industrial concern whereby any industrial waste of any unusual strength or character may be accepted by the City of Dixon for treatment, subject to payment therefore by the industrial concern. Article six, section one. No unauthorized persons shall maliciously, or willfully, or negligently break, damage, destroy, uncover, deface, or tamper with any structure, air, or prudence, or equipment which is part of the sewage works. Any person violating this provision shall be subject to immediate arrest under the charge of disorderly conduct. Article seven. Superintendent and other duly authorized employees of the City of Dixon bearing proper credentials and identification shall be permitted to enter all properties for the purpose of inspection, observation, measurement, sampling, testing, in accordance with provisions of this ordinance. Superintendents or his representatives shall have no authority to inquire into the processes including metallurgical, chemical, oil, refining, ceramic, paper, or other industries beyond that point of having a direct bearing on the kind and source of discharge to the water, sewers, and waterways, or facilities for waste treatment. Section two. While performing the necessary work on private properties referred to in Article seven, section one, above the superintendent or duly authorized employees of the city shall observe all safety rules applicable to the premises established by the company. The companies shall be held harmless for injury or death to City of Dixon employees, and shall indemnify the company against loss or advantage to its property by Dixon, City of Dixon employees, against and against any liability claims and demands for personal injury, property damage asserted against the company in growing out of gauging, sampling operation, except as such may be caused by negligence or failure of the company to maintain safe conditions as required in Article five, section eight. Section three. The superintendent and other duly authorized employees of the City of Dixon bearing proper credentials and identification shall be permitted to enter all private properties through which the City of Dixon holds a duly negotiated easement for purposes of, but not limited to, inspection, observation, measurement, sampling, repair, maintenance of, or portions of the sewage works lying within said easement. All entry and subsequent work, if any, on said easement shall be done in full court in full accordance with the terms of the duly negotiated easement pertaining to the private property involved. Article eight, section one. Any person found being violating any provision of this ordinance, except Article six, shall be served by the City of Dixon with written notice stating the nature of the violation and providing a reasonable time limit for the satisfactory correction thereof. The defendant shall within the time period stated in such notice permanently see so violations. Section two. Any person who shall continue any violation beyond the time limit as provided in Article eight, section one, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and on conviction thereof be fined any amount not exceeding five hundred dollars for each violation. Each twenty-four hour period in which any such violation shall continue shall be deemed a separate offense. Any person violating any of the provisions of this ordinance shall become liable to the City of Dixon for any expense, loss, damage, vacation, the City of Dixon provides reason of such violation. Article nine. All ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section two, the invalidity, the invalidity that any section, clause, sentence, provision of this ordinance shall not be in effect, the validity of any other part of this ordinance which can be given effect without such invalid part or parts. Article ten. This ordinance shall be in full course in effect after its passage, approval, and recording and publication as provided by law. That is, first reading for five-five-eight. At this point, uh, there is any motion for a second reading? Of this particular ordinance?
I think I'm allowed to, um, to read this ordinance again.
We have a motion for the second reading.
Six, should do five-fifty-eight.
Five-five-eight.
Fair.
Yes, on page seven, Article, section four, on the top. Would you read that, more like a solid waste, except one hundred degrees, or? Uh, is page seven where?
Redrope.
Be waste.
Yes, I read that. Okay, I'll read it just to be sure. Any water or waste containing fats, wax, grease, or oils? Whether emulsified or not, in excess of one hundred milligrams or containing substances which may solidify or become vicious at temperatures between thirty-two degrees and one hundred and fifty degrees Fahrenheit, zero and sixty-five degrees Celsius. Okay, we have a motion to read this for the second time. Do we have a second? I say again, we have a motion to read for the second time. If we do not have a second, this motion shall, this ordinance shall not be passed. At this point, ordinance number five-five-eight has been read the first time. It does not have, it has not passed for a second reading, and at this point, this measure shall not be passed. Ordinance number five-five-nine. This is a relatively short. Ordinance number five-five-nine, uh... What's that?
She did not hear, she said she didn't hear us. She didn't hear you correctly.
I'm reading it the second time.
I'm reading it the second time. I should've said.
So we have, we have to read them either in their entirety twice, or have them, uh, available to the public prior to the meeting. And, uh, we have a, uh, we have a first reading on five-five-eight, uh, we do not have a se, we did not have a second on it. Second reading. On the second, we did not have the second on to read it for the second time. So at this point, we need to re-present that. Ordinance number five-five-nine is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Portmany for the purpose of collection of fines for the City, for the Dixon municipal port. This particular ordinance, as you all, uh, are aware, is in the Supreme Court ruling that we have to provide a online means. Mister, uh, Mister Stuckey, before we open this ordinance up for discussion, I need to get your clarification on that. your clarification on that. You want, so you're defining notes on that? Okay. Um, the Supreme Court ruling, Ryan tells us one thing. Uh, under revised Missouri statutes four-seventy-nine, one-three-five-nine, uh, Section One, subsection ten, uh, State's Municipal Court has adopted an electronic payment system for payment by mail for the payment of minor traffic violations. Ryan does, do these, uh, are these the same?
They're different. Um, four-seventy-nine predates section thirty-seven of the new rules of municipal procedures that are out there, simplified Supreme Court last call. And at that, in section four, it is the, uh, the, uh, the general operating standards, three-seven-one-zero-four, section A. But in that, Part Six is that the initial, this provision allows payments online and makes available free online access to information, updating cases, updating warrants, and scheduling of this little business documents. So under four-seventy-nine, there's a disjunctive, either online or by mail, that they say, what this is a new, but three-four is tightened down and said, no, it's not by, it must be online or by mail, as well. So it, I think in operating standard five of that, it says both this or this, but it tells us that it has to be this or so.
So essentially, the, the, the Supreme Court ruling ruled on four-seventy-nine, uh, three-five-nine, and it essentially said, they took away the disjunctive and said that you cannot, uh, it can't be an either or, you have to provide an online feature.
They had interpreted four-seventy-nine, they explained the rule, and so under the, under the constitution, it requires the ability to help the operating structure courts. From that, they set forth Rule Thirty-Seven, which says, there's got to be online optional ability.
So even though right now, four-seventy-nine-point-three-five-nine, uh, revised Missouri statutes state one thing, uh, Rule Thirty-Seven with the court system says we have to have an online feature. Correct. Uh, so to give you guys a little background on that, um, because we, we had some, I had some questions about that, and Mr. Stumpf was kind enough to, uh, answer those questions. Um, we talked about the court money pretty extensively, uh, and the operating, uh, the operating agreement, uh, the, the, there is no fees to be saved. Uh, the fees are paid by the end user. Yeah, if I get a, if I get a traffic ticket and I walk in or I go online to pay it, uh, it's, brings up a little screen, hey, you're going to pay an additional amount for using this feature versus walking into City Hall and paying for traveling. Uh, now, it does not state that we have, that this is the sole means, this just offers an op, another opportunity, another means of collecting fines, other than the traditional ways that we've done so far.
Correct.
Now, this ordinance, uh, does have an attachment to it, uh, and the attachment is simply the operating agreement between the city and the court money. Uh, I think our only requirement at this point would be to read the ordinance twice. And the attachments, okay. Well, we have the, uh, I have the attachments, and, uh, as such, I can go through and read it as necessary.
Do you need a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to repeal five-fifty, the attachments.
We will.
This is mine. Five-five-nine.
You say.
I don't know.
Eight pages, but it's not nearly as difficult as the other. We have a, uh, motion to read, number five-five-nine. Do we have a second? If we have a second by mail. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This passes five-zero. An ordinance of the City of Dixon, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with court money for the collection of fines for the Dixon Municipal Court. Being ordained by the Board of Alderman, the City of Dixon as follows. Section One. Contract with court money is adopted and approved. Contract is attached herein to as exhibited eight and is incorporated herein by reference. The mayor is authorized to execute this contract and the city clerk is directed to affix two to contract, the official seal of the city, and attest to the same. All ordinances or parts of ordinances therefore enacted which are in conflict hereby are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. That was the short part, that was the ordinance. All right. Management agreement. This agreement is made between the City of Dixon, herein, herein after, referred to as client, and Montana Enterprises LLC, D E A, portmoney.com, herein after, referred to as C M. When C M and client agree as follows. System description. C M has developed a service for the purpose of processing payments by credit or debit card payments to the client. C M is a cash facilitator. The payment received by the client is money belonging to the cardholder and is not C M's money. The C M system will provide a service from a remote location twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week. The person wanting to make payments to the client by credit or debit card, they also do so by calling the client or C M for instruction. C M will charge the payer a fee for the services outlined in Attachment A, uh, attached here to, and the part hereup, C M provides or agrees to provide the service described herein in accordance with the terms and conditions of this agreement. C M is agrees to assist the client with getting an approved merchant account with C M approved by sponsored bank. C M will manage that merchant account for the client and be responsible for any fees assessed by the sponsoring bank. Fees are MasterCard, Discover, American Express, credit card companies. These fees are limited to the standard monthly access fees, any fees based on transactions, monthly statements, setup fees, banking fees, and wire transfer fees. C M agrees to contact a bank used by C M and to open a new checking D E A account. This account will be owned by C M. This account will have the name portmoney.com slash the client's name. Client will not take ownership of this account, but can receive monthly statement at the client's request. This account will only use for credit card companies to deposit transaction money and for C M to withdraw those funds to be sent to the client. C M agrees to be responsible for any and all chargebacks processed through C M website or with the help of C M staff. Client agrees to provide C M with all necessary information that is associated with all transactions. Section Two, authorization to begin. Client agrees, C M, client grants C M authorization to begin remote pay services outlined in this agreement for a minimum of one year. This agreement will be automatically extended for an additional year, if it's up to five years. Client agrees to post information regarding C M payment option in all locations, where information about other payment options are available, including but not limited to client's website, phone system, bills, coupon books, collection letters, press releases at the expense of the client. C M will provide the client with inserts and signage at no cost. Client also agrees to allow C M to place signage at the location describing the service subject to approval of the client, which the approval shall not be unreasonably held. Representation of parties. C M represents that it is qualified by training and experience to perform the services outlined in the agreement. Compensation for C M. C M shall not be entitled to any compensation with respect to the service other than that set forth in Attachment A, which is paid by the payer, not the client. It is hereby agreed and understood that there are no fees paid by the client to C M for basic services under attachment fee. Cost. C M shall provide toll-free numbers for communications between the client and C M and between payer and C M. C M will provide complete training for the client at no cost to the client. C M shall not be responsible for any other costs, expenses, fees, or losses arising out of performance under, performance under this agreement, state and federal taxes. The client shall not be responsible for paying any state or federal taxes on C M behalf. Reconciliation. C M will make available a reconciliation report to the client each business day for all transactions completed. The client will have access to these transactions to use at their discretion. Amount to be paid to the client will be forwarded to the client's designated bank, banking account within two business days. Independent contractor. C M shall perform all services under this agreement as an independent contractor and not as, as an employee of the client. C M understands and acknowledges that it shall not be entitled to any of the benefits of a client's employee. The client has the right to rely and does rely upon the expertise of C M to perform these services in a skillful and professional manner. C M agrees to perform the services in such a manner. Responsibilities of the client. The client will follow the procedures for all transactions. The client shall provide equipment to receive and process reconciliation reports and transactions. Confidentiality and nondisclosure. Both parties agree that any information or data obtained, documents produced, or any other material which is required by law or regulation will be kept confidential and not disclosed without prior written approval of the other party or as required by law or regulation. Notices. Any notice or consent required to be given under this agreement shall be given to the respective parties in writing by first-class mail or facsimile delivered to. C M would be, attention, Mr. Joe Henley, President, portmoney.com, P O Box five-seven-eight, Marion, Illinois, six-two-nine-five-nine. And the client would be the City of Dixon, uh, Mayor's Office, P O Box one-seventy-seven, Missouri, six-five-four-five-nine. Or such other address, or to such other person as the parties made from time to time designate under this section which are not sent by mail shall be deemed to be received five days following their deposit into the U.S. mail. Notices and consents under this section which are sent by facsimile shall be deemed received when such facsimile is transmitted to the facsimile number specified in this section and a confirmation that the facsimile has been received by the sender. Exclusive agreement. The client agrees that C M will be its only provider for this type of service during and for the term of this agreement. Termination. The client may terminate this agreement at any time if C M is unwilling or unable to provide the services described in this agreement or C M fails to promptly correct any problems with a remote pay program after notice from the client. Client may also terminate this agreement without cause if the client discontinues this type of program. C M has the right to terminate this agreement if the client does not comply with C M procedures. State law. This agreement shall be governed by the laws of the state of Missouri. Any litigation regarding to this agreement or its consent shall be filed in the County of Missouri, if in the state court, or in appropriate district if in federal court. Agreement between the client and Montana, Lenita Enterprises LLC doing business as portmoney.com, dated on today's date. For as timeline for reconciliation of payments, C M will, will keep available to the client a website history, report on all transactions completed through C M. Amount paid to the client will be forwarded electronically to the client designated account within two business days. Okay, and just so, I'm trying to, I want to make sure we read the fee schedule. Uh, transaction payment fee schedules for cash bail. Charge amount, zero, or one dollar to two hundred dollars, the fee's twenty dollars. Two hundred dollars and a penny to three hundred dollars, it's thirty dollars. Three hundred dollars to four hundred, three hundred dollars and a penny to four hundred is forty. Four hundred dollars and a penny to five hundred is fifty dollars. Five hundred dollars and a penny to seven fifty, seventy-five dollars. Seven hundred and fifty dollars and one penny to one thousand dollars is ninety-five dollars. One thousand dollars and one penny to fifteen hundred dollars is a hundred and ten. Fifteen hundred dollars and a penny to seven hundred and fifty is one hundred and twenty-five dollars. One thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and one cent to two thousand dollars is one hundred and forty-five dollars. Two thousand dollars and one cent to twenty-two, twenty-two hundred dollars and fifty dollars is one hundred and eighty. Two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and one cent to two thousand five hundred is two hundred. So, two thousand five hundred dollars and one cent, two thousand seven hundred dollars and fifty cents is two hundred and twenty. Two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and one cent to three thousand dollars is two hundred and forty. Three thousand dollars and one cent to four thousand dollars is three hundred and twenty. Four thousand dollars, one cent to five thousand is four hundred dollars. Five thousand dollars and one cent to six thousand is four hundred and eighty. Six thousand dollars and one cent to seven thousand is five sixty. Seven thousand dollars and one cent to eight thousand, six hundred and forty. Eight thousand dollars and one cent to nine thousand is seven hundred and twenty. Nine thousand dollars and one cent to ten thousand is eight nine dollars. Ten thousand and up, please call portmoney.com. All right. Court money transaction payment schedule for fines and other fees. This is for fines, not bail. Zero to fifty dollars is two dollars. Fifty dollars and one cent and up, four percent of the fine. Call center transactions will add an additional three dollars and fifty cents for each transaction. This fee schedule can be amended by court money at any time with written notice to the client. the client. Timeline for reconciliation. CM will keep the available, will keep available to the client a website history report for all transactions completed through CM. The amount paid to the client will be forwarded electronically to the client's designated account within two business days by CM. CM, portmoney.com, basic services. There are no fees paid by the client to CM for basic services. Basic services include the following. Remote credit or debit card payment service with the call center and Internet transaction capability. Service available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Payments made to the client are via ACH, addendum A, hold harmless. The Port Money website is compliant with the Payment Card Industry Data Security Standard and Port Money agrees to hold client harmless for any fraud, viruses, identity theft which may occur through the use of this system provided that the occurrence of such fraud, viruses, or identity theft is not the result of a client's employee, personnel, or agents. At this point in time, we would need to read this for a second time.
I'll make a motion that we repeal Bill 559 a second time.
Do we have a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Jim Coad, who has passed as 5-0. An ordinance of the City of Dixon, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter a contract with Port Money for the purpose of collection of fines for the Dixon Municipal Court, being ordained by the Board of Alderman, City of Dixon, Missouri as follows. Section 1. Contract with Port Money is adopted and approved. Contract attached hereto is as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Mayor is authorized to execute the contract and the city clerk is directed to affix to the contract the official seal of the city and attest to the same. That all ordinances or parts of ordinances therefore enacted which are in conflict here with are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. The agreement is made by and between the City of Dixon hereafter referred to as client and Montana Enterprises LLC, DVA, or Doing Business As, Portmoney.com, herein after referred to as CM, wherein CM and the client agree as follows. System description. CM has developed a service for the purpose of processing payments by credit or debit card payments to the client. CM is a cash facilitator. The payment received by the client is money belonging to the cardholder and is not CM's money. The CM system will provide a service from a remote location 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The person wanting to make payments to the client by credit or debit card may do so, may also do so, by calling the client or CM for instruction. CM will charge the payer of the fee as service outlined in attachment A, attachment hereto, and may part hereof. CM agrees to provide the service described herein in accordance with the terms and conditions of this agreement. CM agrees to assist the client with getting an approved merchant account with a CM-approved sponsor bank. CM will manage that merchant account for the client and be responsible for any fees assessed by the sponsoring bank, decent MasterCard, Discover Card, or American Express Credit Card companies. These fees are not limited to the standard monthly assessed fees and fees based on transactions, monthly statement fees, setup fees, banking fees, wire transfer fees. CM agrees to contact a bank used by CM and to open a new DVA or checking account. This account will be owned by CM. The account will have this name, portmoney.com/theclient'sname. Client will not take ownership of this account but can receive monthly statements at the client's request. This account will only be used by the credit card companies to deposit the transaction money and for CM to withdraw those funds to be sent to the client. CM agrees to be responsible for any and all chargebacks processed through CM website or with the help of CM staff. Client agrees to provide CM with all information necessary that is associated with all transactions. Authorization to begin. Client grants CM authorization to begin remote pay service as outlined in this agreement for a minimum of one year. This agreement will automatically be extended for an additional year for periods up to five years. Advertisements of the service. The client agrees to post information regarding CM payment option in all locations where and about other options available, including but not limiting to client's websites, phone system, bills, coupon books, collection letters, press releases at the expense of the client. CM will provide its client inserts and signage at no cost. The client also agrees to allow CM to place signage at the location described as the service subject to the approval by the client, which approval shall not be unreasonably held. Representation of the parties. CM represents that this is, that it is a qualified by training and experience to perform the services outlined in this agreement. Compensation for CM. CM shall not be entitled to any compensation with respect to the service other than that is set forth herein in attachment A, which is paid by the payer, not the client. It is hereby agreed and understood that there are no fees by the client to CM for basic services under attachment B. Cost. CM shall provide toll-free numbers for communications between the client and CM and between payer and CM. CM will provide complete training to the client at no cost. CM shall not be responsible for any other cost, expenses, fees, or losses arising out of its performance under this agreement. State and federal taxes. The client shall not be responsible for paying any state or federal taxes on CM's behalf. Reconciliation. CM will make available a reconciliation report to the client each business day for all transactions completed. The client will have access to these transactions to use at their discretion. The amount to be paid to the client will be forwarded to the client's designated bank account within two business days. Independent contractor. CM shall perform all services under this agreement as an independent contractor and not as an employee of the client. CM understands and acknowledges that it is not entitled to any benefits of the client's employee. The client has the right to rely and does rely upon the expertise of CM to perform services in a skillful and professional manner. CM agrees to perform these services in such a manner. Responsibilities of the client. The client will follow CM procedures for all transactions. The client shall provide the equipment to receive and process reconciliation reports and transactions. Confidentiality and nondisclosure. Both parties agree that any information or data obtained, documents produced, or any other material which was required by law or regulation will be kept confidential and shall not be disclosed without written approval of the other party or as required by law or regulation. Notices. Any notice of consent required to be given under this agreement shall be respective parties in writing by first-class mail or by facsimile delivered to the client, which would be the City of Dixon, Office of the Mayor, P.O. Box 177, Dixon, Missouri, 65459. CM would be Mr. Joe Henley, President, portmoney.com, P.O. Box 578, Marion, Illinois, 62959. Fax number 618-993-8738. Or to other such addresses or to other such person that the parties made from time to time designate under this section which are not sent by mail shall be deemed to be received five days following their deposit into the U.S. mail. Notices and consents under this section which are sent by facsimile shall be deemed received when such facsimile is transmitted to the facsimile number specified in this section and a confirmation has been received by the sender. Exclusive agreement. The client agrees that CM will be its only provider for this type of service during and for the term of this agreement. Termination. The client may terminate this agreement at any time if CM is unable or unwilling to provide services described in this agreement or CM fails to promptly correct any problems with a remote pay program after notice from the client. Client may also terminate this agreement without cause if the client discontinues this type of program. CM has the right to terminate this agreement if the client does not comply with CM's procedures. State law. This agreement shall be covered by the laws of the state of Missouri and a litigation regarding this agreement or its consent shall be filed in the client's county in Blaskey in the state of Missouri or in the appropriate district if in federal court. The agreement between the client and Montana Enterprises LLC, DVA, portmoney.com, dated today. Client reserves right to terminate this agreement at any time upon expiration of the one year, upon expiration of one year from the date of the execution of this agreement, either party may terminate upon 30 days upon written notice to the other court. Upon termination, client agrees to return any hardware CM has provided them for the use of this contract. Attachment A. Transaction fee schedule. For cash bail. This is for cash bail. $1 to $200, $20. $200 and one cent to $300 is $30. $300 and one cent to $400 is $40. $400 and one cent to $500 is $50. $500 and one cent to $750 is $75. $75 and one cent to $1,000 is $95. $1,000 and one cent to $1,500 is $110. $1,500 and one cent to $1,750 is $125. $1,750 and one cent to $2,000 is $145. $2,000 and one cent to $2,250 is $180. $2,250 and one cent to $2,250 is $200. $2,500 and one cent to $2,750 is $220. $2,750 and one cent to $3,000 is $240. $3,000 and one cent to $4,000 is $320. $4,000 and one cent to $5,000 is $400. $5,000 and one cent to $6,000 is $480. $6,000 and one cent to $7,000 is $560. $7,000 and one cent to $8,000 is $640. $8,000 and one cent to $9,000 is $720. $9,000 and one cent to $10,000 is $800. $10,000 and up, must call portmoney.com for the recreation for cash bail. Timeline for reconciliation of payments. CM will keep the available, will keep available to the client on the website a history report of all transactions through CM. The amount paid to the client will be forwarded electronically to the client's designated account within two business days by CM. Attachment A continued. The Port Money transaction payment fee schedule for fines and other fees will be, zero to $50 will be $2. $50 and one cent and up will be four percent of the fine. Call center transactions will add an additional $3.50 for each transaction. This fee schedule can be amended by Port Money at any time with written notice to Timeline for reconciliation of services for the transaction payment fee schedule for fines of other courts. CM will keep available to the client a website history report for all transactions completed through CM. The amount paid to the client will be forwarded electronically to the client's designated account within two business days by CM. Portmoney.com, basic services. There are no fees paid by the client to CM for basic services. Basic services include the following. Remote credit debit card payment service with call center and Internet transaction capability. Service available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Payments to the client are made via ACH, addendum A, hold harmless. Port Money website is compliant with the Payment Card Industry Data Security Standard and Port Money agrees to hold client harmless for any fraud, viruses, or identity theft which may occur through the use of this system provided that the occurrence of such fraud, viruses, or identity theft is not the result of conduct by client, employees, personnel, or agents. That is the entirety. This has been read twice. At this point, I would entertain a motion to vote on Bill 559. We have a motion to approve. By Jimmy, seconded by Paul. There is no further discussion. Roll call votes.
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle. Maron Tevons.
Yes.
Paul Was. Eddie. That's the pass through.
Oh, man. Buddy, here we are. Shaun's earnings, now due 35 minutes.
That's right. All right. Do we have, now, just so I'm correct, 557 has been taken, correct, Justin?
Yes.
558 did not pass for a secondary, correct? Now, point of order, Matt Ryan, throw back up, or?
We can do the proper flagrant.
And then we can read it for the second time? Short order?
I'll make a motion that we put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
And if you're available to the public.
And it's available.
And I want, I want to make sure I'm clear in your motion, Betty. Is that for 557 and 558?
Yes. On time.
We can do the proper...
And then we can read it for the second time? Short order?
I'll make a motion that we put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Is that for...
And it's available.
And I want to make sure I'm clear in your motion, Betty. Is that for 557 and 558?
Yes, 557 and 558.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in the second for 557, 558 to be available to the public and to be on the agenda for the next meeting. Marilyn.
And that is available to the public as they wish until the next meeting. City Hall.
All right. Okay. So, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. These will be made available to the public. We'll take care of, we will take a look at those next. Last item, under ordinances, Marilyn, you had brought up an issue on ordinances that you needed to discuss in reference to directing the attorney to draft ordinances for the marshal, the head of the marshal and elected officials. Can you please come clarify that? So I make sure I get what your intent is.
Yes, sometimes, well, last October, the council met, and we discussed this, approved the races. And we was waiting for the ordinance to be written so they could take place in April. And it wasn't, we didn't receive it, and therefore, nobody got to raise. And I personally, and I think most everyone else here, and other people involved, feel like if we waited long enough, and I think it's time that we have the ordinance prepared, and I would like to see them drawn for the next special meeting or no later than the election.
So, that is for the amounts that we budgeted this specific year. So, just so I'm clear, I'd like to get the motion on that and get it voted on so we can have Brian write those up.
We did that already.
They're already written.
And I did make a motion just while ago.
So we just need to put those on the agenda for the next meeting, is that correct?
I added in this motion that we're like what we're going on, we're like what we're going to use to be drawn to the council. The next calls are...
The next special meeting.
The next special meeting are the...
Okay. We can...
Second back motion.
Well...
And go affect till the next election.
And go affect till the next election.
And go affect till the next April.
Right. That's correct.
I can not pay my own, I don't have a budget and everything.
Because those never pass, so... The elected officials have to be passed, so we can allocate the money and the budget all day long, but if we do not vote and do what we did with these other two ordinances, we've allocated the money and nothing else. So that's kind of where we're sitting after those.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but on the marshals, he doesn't come up for twenty-four years.
That would be correct.
So he would not take effect until the three-year...
Until it's really...
But we did vote on it.
We voted to put it into the budget.
But we're responsible for it. Was it a good reason why this was... It wasn't our fault.
You're a great... Down. Trying to find the year. It was a time when you were gone and things got changed, especially maybe the... You didn't have... Trying to find a year.
Those pay raises were scheduled, I had a budget meeting in September.
We voted on that, and the whole thing in September. We were here, we did it. While we did it without you, it was all passed.
The ordinance, the budget that I presented back end last year did not include races for elected officials. The races for elected officials was added on by amendment by council at that time. And at that point, I believe a majority of the council was under the impression that we were, that those races would go into effect in April. The factual matter of it is because state law says we pay for elected officials has to be done by ordinance before it can be in effect, quite simply, the ordinances was not voted on, so they cannot be in effect. Now, we can put that, we can have them read, we can have them read at the next meeting, but they would not go in effect until the next meeting is for the election. Is that correct? All right. So, those will be a city hall for everybody to review along with 557 and 558, and that will square those issues.
I still don't understand that one year because we did vote on it. It was supposed to go into effect. We figured it'd be a time to make the way of the deal itself.
That was, you know what, put it on me, drop the ball with you.
It wasn't your fault.
You know, and I'll take full responsibility that those ordinances wasn't presented to us anytime for the April election. However, that's, it's unfortunate, but it's, we can't turn back the clock. What we can do is get them read and get them voted on at the next meeting, and we can knock it out from there quick.
Could you clarify whether all just elected officials will get this pay raise at the next election or just the ones that are reelected?
It'll be just the elected officials.
Thank you.
Just reelected officials are good to raise.
Yes, it will be the way that the law reads.
That includes the older.
Yes, it includes all the new. The...
Within. That's very... And it is, I agree.
So it will be for the reelection. And that is my understanding of it right now, unless somebody has a different understanding than I do. So with that, we will tackle that at first meeting, with the rest of it, then we'll get them knocked out.
We did do it. We did do it. That's the thing, we did do it.
Is everybody ready to have fun and get on to different subjects? In ordinances? I guess you guys need to know my name and residence and all that. Mike Watson, 503 West Agnoa Alley. I live right up that alley. I've been there forty-one, going on forty-two years. I like Dixon. Probably gonna die here. But one thing that's going to expedite the matter here is this photo album. I've been asking for it for a week and two days. Every time I ask Jesse about it, he's been looking for it. Today, they found it. That's gonna save a lot of time because I have done everything I had in. So we don't have to go through that except there's one different thing in here, and that's in 2015, September 2015, when I took these pictures. There was a metal culvert north end of Plum Alley, which kept getting smashed down and full of debris all the time. Since then, it's switched from that to a plastic culvert. So that's one good thing. The other, that's about the only good thing. But the next thing is, these are pictures from September of 2015 showing erosion of the alley, creek, and I got all kinds of problems in here. And I left it with the city council on June 6th, July 6th of 2016, for everybody to view. I just wonder how many took it home or actually went to the city hall and actually looked through it and read it. Show of hands.
I looked at it at the meeting.
And the reason I left it is because you can't go through all these pictures and read all the catchings. At the meeting, we got to expedite things around here. That's why I left it at the city hall. And they found it, they took care of it, and I'm happy about that. Now, I got pictures, this is July 2015, or September 2015. I've got thirty-four pictures on my camera for July of 2016. Oh, here's some things I wanted to bring up to you guys. These are the kind of things I wanted to talk about. That's so you can follow along, kind of realize what I'm trying to do. Wing branch not here. Just try to make things easy as possible. Okay? The main problem is at 6 and M. And for anybody who don't know where that's at, that's 302 Sixth Street. That's the small shop. 200M is the big shop. Does everybody know where that's at? We're gonna save a lot of time by not going through everything I had on this book. Well, what I got down there, we'll start with the problems I've got down there. First off, a little history. I've owned the little shop since 1978, the big one since 1993. So I've got quite a bit of history. I've known about the diversion of the creek, the overflow, all kinds of stuff. This erosion down there that's been happening has been more pronounced in the last five years than the first thirty-four years that I owned it. That culvert that's down there right now, Martha Alexander told me she was eight years old when she used to go over a tree to cross it. So that culvert, I did have the exact age of it. It's between 1935 and 1940 that culvert got put in. I think she said she was eight years old, so I forget how old she is right now, but that's quite a long time. And, you know, Dixon's changed a lot since, wouldn't you say, since 1940? A lot of things changed. Well, that's when that culvert was put in. Dixon up here was a different kind of town. First of all, they never had all this pavement. They never had all these buildings. They never had concrete all over the place. But every time the south end of Dixon gets paved, like the walking trail, anything that takes water away from the ground causes more water flow down there with me. And I know, John Doyle knows what a hydrology report is. Do you know what that is, John? That's where you take a measurement of all the pavement, every building. It's very labor intensive and time consuming. And I'm not gonna ask nobody to do that because it's common sense to know that Dixon's changed since 1940. Lot more water flow down through there. And if you look at the pictures, you can clearly see I've got a problem. And right now, that creek down there, just this last rain, I lost a foot on both sides. And where you can't see where it's out of sight, the middle of the creek, we're starting to get an island in the middle because the center is filling up, and that causes the water to flow on both sides. And Jesse owns some property right beside me, it's taken out the back of his yard right there. I mean, every time it rains, it's just ridiculous. And if you'll also, if anybody would go down there and look on the Plum Alley on the north end, that culvert that's on the north end, there's a large hole in there. Sunday, there was all kinds of kids roller skating, bicycles, them little, I don't know what they are, they're little skeeters. Kids go up and down there all the time.
Depending, they have the little handlebar.
I don't know what they're called, but I call them little skeeter or something. But those kids start at the top of each hill, they fly down through there, they don't watch the stop signs, they don't watch traffic. But it's dangerous right there. If you guys tomorrow go down there and look on the north end of that culvert, it's terrible. And I've been feeling that thing for years, for years. I used to pack rocks and put it on both sides of the bank. I'm saying since 1978. I mean, but now it's gotten out of control and I cannot do it anymore. It's plum out of control. And that's a problem right there. Another one is Caroline Alexander, Winston Alexander, on the east side of Sixth, there's no ditch. Whenever the water flows, a moderate rain, there's no ditch to turn the water and take it on down to where Jason Campbell lives, down to there, because there's not a culvert in front of Paul Rees, and there is not a culvert in front of Billy Yates. So when you, if you do turn the water, it's still gonna go across the road, the neighbor down the road's gonna have a problem because all the water's gonna go to Paul Rees and then it's gonna stop. So, you know, that's a problem. And this thing's, there used to be a ditch here because Winston Alexander, I don't think would put up with flooding in the business that lot where we've done there for a lot of years. Winston, when I bought the building from him, told me he never, ever had a water problem. Ninety-three, you will get rain, it's like an eight-incher, like we just had in a short period of time, you're gonna have, you will, with other people, you're gonna have a problem. But what I'm wanting is if we do everything possible to turn the water and do everything, like open up the ditch and bank it properly where the water will flow, if the creek, the middle gets dug out and some kind of channel, erosion control can be put back on the banks to bring the creek back to its original width, it might help me with water problems. And then if you've done all you can do, that's all you can do. But when nothing gets done, you know, I get pretty aggravated. I gotta go in there, mop the floor out, gotta put fans on it. If I'm home, it's not so bad. But when I'm gone on a trip, that's whenever water sits in that office. And you know, I've got the floor peeling up, I've got the baseboards starting to rot, the base plate, the paneling. It wasn't like that when I bought the building, and Winston wouldn't put up with it either.
Now, Mike, just so the council's clear, the Corps of Engineers has ruled from Sixth Street North that that is considered a jurisdictional waterway, correct?
Yeah.
And Sixth Street South is a non-jurisdictional waterway. The jurisdictional waterways, as it's been explained to me, and you and I have talked about this, require permitting, not only from the landowner, but also, I believe at that point, the easements.
Easements from the landowner. I own on both sides, Jesse owns right down the creek from me, so I don't see a problem with easements. And I got a letter that John Doyle sent, I don't know where he sent it to, but I got it up there. They said she'd be able to get a permit within twenty-one to thirty days, but then you're gonna have to allow time for homeowners, allow time for homeowners to look it over. So, you know, you could have a homeowner that maybe didn't want nothing done on their side, but a lot of times, these guys, like the farmers out in the country, they got creeks, stuff... But a lot of times, these guys, like the farmers out in the country, they got creeks, stuff like that. They have to do this on their own because they're out in the country and they're not in Dixon. So they gotta go to the homeowner across the road and go, hey, I gotta get an easement from you, cause I gotta get a permit. Okay, well, we're in the city limits of Dixon. I've read a lot of stuff, and I think you guys need to help me out on this. Cause jurisdictional waters is set up to not let dirty water discharge into a creek or a tributary or a ditch. And also, not to fill in a tributary, ditch, or creek. Those are the two main things that I read about jurisdictional waters. And nobody's gonna be putting dirty water in it, and nobody's gonna be filling it in. All what I'm asking is to try to figure out a way that I'm not losing my building. If you go down there right now, if that, if that maple tree goes, there's an elm tree holding up concrete bank on the east side of that culvert. Me and Paul Diddy poured that in 1993 at our own cost when I bought the building to stop the erosion. I never asked nobody to chip in on that. Well, at the time, the creek was no problem. So now I got a big problem, but I think it's also because of all the upgrading up here in Dixon. Everybody else up here is getting new pavement, building a new bank, uh, the new school, the gymnasium, water running off from that. See, that all used to be grass. Remember, before the gym got built? Does anybody remember that? Well, every time you take away one square foot of soil above me, that puts one more square foot of water down to me. So I think a culvert that was built in 1935 or 40 is a little bit undergraded or whatever you wanna call it. So that's one thing. I only, it's a problem down there, and I think I need some help with it, because I've been taking care of it for a lot of years. Nobody, I mean, dolly, how much longer am I gonna have to, how am I gonna get into my garage if that, if that tree goes and that bank goes, the concrete slip protection that I poured on my own? When it goes, it's just because that culvert is deficient. I used to inspect culverts for state, so I know what I'm talking about. And I've, I've been busy doing other stuff, I can write up the stuff on what the problems are. And John Doyle, I think, he knows what the problems are. Well, another thing that I wanna bring up about the erosion is that because of the roads aren't maintained properly and the ditches maintained properly, that puts a lot of water coming down from the elementary down that hill. And there's a manhole down there that is right on the south end of the little shop building, a manhole right to the rock. And on May 24th, I keep track of everything I, who, and who I talked to. I talked to Robbie about the culvert at the north end of Plum Alley. This was the new one they got put in, it's a black plastic one, it was over half full of water. And whenever you, you get water coming down that hill and hits that culvert and it's half full, it turns and goes right to the front door of that shop building, the little shop, and goes right to the roll-up door, every time. So, okay, Robbie did come and flush that out with the jet truck, because I was pretty aggravated. Because they don't go around and flush these culverts like they're supposed to. I went up and asked him to do it. In the meantime, that's when I talked to him about Winston's ditch. Can you do something about that? You know, you can clearly see, anybody can go over there and see the problem. Okay, I know exactly, I didn't write down exactly what he said on that, but that was May 24th to 2016. On June 15th, I told him about the manhole sucking in water. I said, that manhole, you go over there and there was little paper and toilet paper and different things, and it was sucked in just like the vacuum cleaner. And I went over and told him about it. He told me, the city don't have any risers, they need to put risers on that manhole. Which, you know what a riser is? It's to bring the, to cover the manhole, so it doesn't suck in water, water will flow around it. He said, we don't have any risers. Hodges down there has risers in the old city maintenance lot. Why don't you go get one? We don't have, they're not ours. Okay, did you order one and ever get one put up down there right now? No, still, it's right at ground level. And I forgot, a moderate five-minute rain, water will go into that manhole. Moderate five-minute rain, because it comes right down the hill, it flows right over that manhole. So, simple problem, you know, when I ask a simple thing to try to help the city out and do something, can't you do the simple things, put a riser on a manhole? Well, you don't have to aggravate them every time, because you have to street, treat every gallon of water that goes to that water treatment plant down there. So I think it's a good idea to keep stormwater out of the sewer system. And that's just one little place that could be fixed. I don't know how long it takes to put a riser on, but I don't think it takes very long. And that aggravates me. Not just little simple things like that, you know, it just gets passed over. But I don't know, something's gonna have to be done about that creek. And I don't think it's my responsibility that I gotta go get permits and whatever, because it's a problem that everybody else presented up here since 1940. And upgrading Dixon, getting bigger and better, but the people down there on the end, like me, what happens to me? I gotta pay out a bunch of money, I've been taking care of that ditch for 20 years down there.
John, what's Corps of Engineers requirement on that, on jurisdictional waterways?
Permit, for sure. No, no placement of fill below or in the creek channel, no placement of fill.
I want fill taken out of the creek channel and put on the banks. So at Donnie Road, you ought to go down there and see how much I've lost this last storm that we had. And in the last five years, it's been worse than the first 34, so what's going on?
What else did I tell you, that little shop? Two and a half inches of water in that little shop.
I can't really hear.
I said also, along with that, that little shop, and I got pictures of two and a half inches of water in the floor of it.
This rain?
This rain, no, we deterred the sandbag dirt.
Mike, we try to keep everything sandbagged as much as possible.
But before, you know, we had to add sandbags to it, but, but before, the culvert issue across the road is running over the road and runs right into them shops. And it's the big rain like we had, means this is getting worse.
And on these pictures right here, you can see, it's funny, because when it rains really hard, the water comes right down the middle of the road. Well, another thing, the catalpa trees at the top of the hill there on the left. I used to have to go and dig the dang, I'd have to sit out there and do like storm patrol. Be out there and when the leaves would, and the brush and stuff would get in that upper culvert, it forced the water out into the edge of the roadway. And you see the pictures, I got two orange lines marked. The water goes right to the front door, goes to the bottom of the hill, and why the hell, it curves right to the front door and to the roll-up door. I never seen nothing like it. I go, I mean, I did, I think that's pretty unlucky.
Now, John, just so I'm clear, Corps of Engineers stands right now for jurisdictional waterways. It was my interpret, it was my understanding when the Corps came down last year that the process starts with the landowner.
They gave us, not what we was wanting, they gave us 50 feet off the road downstream and up to maintain or the ability to maintain without permitting. But that's 50 feet. Beyond that 50 feet was where they required the permitting to go, and that was through landowners. From them to the downstream. There were two paths that, that you could go by, you could go by the landowners acquiring the permits. The other, I think the, the, the other one was where the land was dedicated to the city, and the city acquired the permits. You know, through the, through the, the channel section or the, the high bank of the ditch.
For this particular erosion problem, we could do the first 50 feet without permitting from.
50 feet from the edge of pavement, right, down, downstream, or up.
Going, but doing.
But you could do anything you want upstream, right, I thought? Because that's non, that's not jurisdictional.
Non-jurisdictional, from 6th Street South was considered. But if you look at that, if you look at that, it's not, it's, it's concrete. You know, I mean, basically, it's in a concrete box from C Highway to his shop. Very little open channel on the other side of 6th Street through there, and then when it come out there, that's where they.
And we could start, start the process of filling in or fixing the erosion problem up to 50 feet, or after 50 feet. We would need Mike to work with us to get a permit from.
To the end of his property.
And a temporary easement to fix the problem. That would allow.
You mean, you mean that'd be up to me?
What's that?
I gotta get the permits?
Beyond 50 feet from what he's saying, up to 50 feet beyond from the pavement, we can fix. Beyond 50 feet, we would have to have you get the permit from the Corps of Engineers.
I'll, I'll do whatever it's gonna take, cause I gotta get that problem fixed. Because I go, I plan on being here the rest of my life, and I'm, that building, that shop down there is just a place for me to tinker with my stuff. And I'm, but, I'm, I'm gonna be here and I want it, I'm gonna fix it. I don't care what it takes to, I just want to get something done, nobody's doing nothing.
Well, then I think, I think we've got a workable game plan to, to address the problem, and I think we need.
Believe me, I'm tickled pink to hear that.
You know, at least we know, we know the, the framework of how to resolve the, the erosion problem. One is to start tapping on Corps of Engineers for what exactly we need to get done in order to do it.
I wanna, I wanna add, now when Willard comes back over here and they chat, chat the sides of the road. Right now, we're at the shop, there isn't any guys much water in there now, it's cause there's a ravine cut down through there which heads it to the creek, away from the shops. But now when they come in there and they lay that chat.
That's the north side of 6th, there's a little ravine off, off from the pavement. And that is helping a lot. It's helping channel the water all the way to the creek.
When they come in there and they lay that chat, there's that, it's gonna be a, it's gonna run right, all go to the shops.
Close that off.
And in 1978, if you go out there and look at the front door of the garage, I hired a guy to come in there with a bulldozer and put a little berm right there. You'll see something that doesn't look normal. Because I was afraid of a water problem, so I had a little berm made. If you'll look on the left side of the building, if you're standing at the entrance door. And I've rented that shop to a lot of people, and that pretty much took care of if there was ever gonna be a water problem. Because I don't like water problems, I don't like renting to people. I've got a list of people that'll say they never ever had a water problem down there. I started renting that place in 1978, two people. There's a litany of people I got here that'll testify they never had a water problem. After, I put that berm in because I wanted to make sure. The creek was a lot smaller, there was a lot less water coming from up here in town back then, but it's steadily increasing. Every time somebody puts a new parking lot in, puts up a new metal tin building. I wish we had a way of looking at satellite photos from the very first one. You will see a lot of the ground and soil around here, it's gone. The walkway down here at the park is, for instance, it, it don't matter, anytime you take a square foot of soil away, I got a problem.
Now, John, one of the, one of the, I guess, questions that I, that I have, if we funnel the water, so to speak, at 6th and Elm, what's it gonna do? If we, if we brought in 50 feet and fixed that, can you tell me what it's gonna do down the creek?
Any.
How's it gonna push the water down?
Right. Any, um, any work completed in a creek or any major work through a creek channel along its alignment would require a hydraulic study of that creek to investigate, um, the flooding that it could potentially occur upstream, okay, any backwater effects that it may have. Um, so you would, you would definitely be advised to do a hydraulic study prior to ripping out these solutions to the bank erosion and installing them. Cause if you generate or create another problem or just move the problem, that's, that's not, that's not advised.
Yeah, cause then Jesse might be up here in my place, because he's gonna have a problem down there.
Because what I don't, what I don't want is us to fix the problem here and flood somebody out down there, cause we just bought that out.
And you'd be looking at a, a hydraulic study of that branch, probably neighborhood of probably near your house to the end of the soccer field is where I would probably recommend the study be run to and from.
Cause that would be, you know, roughly from the middle of Elm Street down to the, down past the soccer fields. What's the process for something like that? To not, to, to put.
You're looking at a, probably close to maybe half a mile of creek, okay? Let me ask you a question, is your property in the flood plain, is that creek in the flood plain?
I don't know, nobody ever told me it was. I don't even know how to go about finding that out. I can only tell you what's happened over the years, that's what I'm here for. I don't know nothing about flood plains.
I, I think it may be, honestly, now that I think about it, because they moved the jer, the water from our treatment plant, remember? And we got stringent limits down there. I think there's a chance that even the flood plain moved with that. Now, don't quote me on that, but I think I remember when we went through that process of re-permitting at the plant, that they were talking about the flood plain moving upstream as well. And I believe it went to 6th Street. And that, that was something I wasn't thinking about. If that's the case, then you will have to do probably an additional study with FEMA to plot the, plot the flood plain. And it's a flood plain, it's an approximate Zone A, okay? Which means there's no base flood elevations to that flood plain. You would have to establish base flood elevations through that flood plain from 6th Street to the soccer field. And that's expensive.
How do we start the process or get information on starting the process? For, for any, for all of the above, because we've gotta have, in order to address the problem, we've also gotta have the, so.
Uh, the landowner?
Landowner owns it?
Yeah, I think across the property line. I think you, it's, it's not a, um, I don't believe the creek would be considered a navigable water, if that makes sense. You got navigation waters and you, I don't think, other than walking as a source of navigation, it's not a navigable water. So the landowner, like the Gascónade River, the lots on it go to the edge of the river, because that's a navigable stream. Here in town and even at Jones Creek, property owners own across the creek, they own the creek, okay? Uh, even at portions of larger creeks where, where the property line extends across the creek. So I don't know that, I would say the landowners are the owner of that, of that watershed in the creek.
I'd like to find that out for exact.
Real, I, I can tell you exact, you own the creek.
I'm just wondering, cause we've had, we've had work down in these creeks.
So I guess I can do anything I want to the creek. Well, I'm the. So I guess I can do anything I want to the creek. Well, I'm the landowner, right?
You own the creek.
I ain't gonna do that. I don't want things done missing.
I gotta tell you, no.
You know what? This is why, why don't we put a tax on everybody that wants to build a parking lot, a new house? Why don't we tax everybody so that we can take care of that problem and do it right, the way I look at it?
I think I'm.
The problem's caused all up here.
I understand.
John.
I, I understand that. I, I got that.
If we, if, if we hadn't built a, a building, if we hadn't done nothing since nineteen forty, I'd be fine. Except for the ditch over there at Caroline's, that's, that's over years and years and years of her bank sloughing down and filling in the ditch.
I don't think a tax would probably go over very well.
I don't imagine it would, I'd be rotating John Dixon.
Well, there's other.
We need to figure out something, I'm telling you.
Opportunities out there, you know, council could entertain potential, uh, stormwater detention regulations, where when you build a building, you're required to detain the water and not let it flow out of your property. You know, let just unregulated just go, uh, where you, where you could actually detain. And the flow existing equals the flow after development. And you could, you know, entertain ordinances such as that, where that would be more, I guess, amenable to the people instead of a tax or something.
When I bought that building back in nineteen seventy-eight, multi-floral rose bushes, completely engulfed, both sides that met you in the middle. You couldn't even walk through there like that. That's how I did it. I wished I'd took pictures. Reason I started cutting that stuff back, it was holding water back from everybody up here. You would not believe the trash, the debris, the stuff that'd come down there and get caught in that culvert, and it would back water up. So I thought, you know, I gotta cut this out of here, so I did. Started cutting where the water could flow better. So, I did that. But that was in seventy, you go up to ninety-three, all those years, no problem. And I got also on here creek debris and vegetation. Every time, every time we had a ice storm, I'll tell you what happened. Downstream, there'd be ice dams. Everybody's having trouble when you got an ice storm. I had the dates wrote down. There was three of them down through there, you couldn't water, nothing could flow down through there, it was bank to bank, ice. Trees, you know, limbs that fell down. I cut it all out, burned it myself, took care of it. Didn't even tell nobody I was doing it. He knows I did it. Paul Denny knows I did it. Other people that I cut wood for knows I did it, because I wasn't burning wood at the time. That's another thing about creek debris and vegetation. These creeks around here need to be cleaned out. And they need to be vegetation cut out. There's trees growing in all our ditches around here. There's an elm tree growing in every culvert. And elm tree roots, what do they do to the asphalt whenever they're on top of a culvert? They leach out and they bust the asphalt apart. That's going on all over town. Nobody will put the proper vegetation control on these ditches around here. I say they ought to start right up there and two hours a day, three men or, they got plenty of time to start at the south end of town, take one creek at a time, properly cut the brush, treat it properly, and it's not gonna come back. You might have to put two applications on it. Instead of like over there, those, that Catalpa tree at the top of Sixth. The bushes are already back this tall, they were cut last, not very long ago, I got it wrote down. But nobody put any, nobody put a thing on it to kill that tree. And that's what's going on, it's a revolving circle, and I want that taken care of and done properly. Because then these guys, the maintenance guys, when they're not out here every three years cutting the same bushes down, maybe they could be down here keeping the trash and stuff picked up out of the park. Or down, uh, C Highway here, or maybe they could help with the, uh, debris that gets in these gutters and culverts. Because I tell you what, I seen them, a couple of storms, I got it wrote down, that one over there on Ellen, they didn't clean it for a month. And two or three different times, storms came, I did, I could not believe it. Jimmy Doyle can probably attest to it right there, he lives there. They never come and took one thing out of that culvert, and they knew the storm was coming. Now, that's incompetence on somebody. I wanna, I, you know, I mean, I drive around and I can clearly see the problems, nobody else can. Every creek, almost every culvert in town and every ditch in town has got vegetation like you would not believe. Why not cut it and kill it back? Then you won't have those dams like I took care of, uh, north of my shop. If you cut the, I know we ain't got the money to cut every tree back twenty feet, but wouldn't it be nice if we had all that? And all rock riprap? We ain't, we ain't got the money to do it. Boy, wouldn't that be nice? No, no leaves, no limbs, no trees, because riprap, twenty foot back, take every tree out you can that's on the, near the creek.
I got, uh, I spoke with the maintenance supervisor today, shortly after you and I talked, probably about thirty minutes. And one of the items that, you know, he and I discussed was the application of, uh, this, this specific material to keep trees from regrowing that would be environmentally safe to dissolve, essentially dissolve the tree once it's cut and cure that issue. So, give us a little bit of reaction time with it, let us get it in. Ernie Mentola is, uh, the maintenance guy that's in charge of essentially mowing the ditches and, uh, groundskeeping, for lack of a better term.
Talking about mowing the ditches, that's another thing. I've seen these guys. We need, where the resident, the homeowner takes care of that. The next property up, it sits tall and they don't even touch it. Now, what's with that?
Well, that's, that's where the, I can't speak about the business practice that they used in the past, but I can tell you going into this year, what I specifically did is I got with Robbie, who's the maintenance supervisor, and we allocated, uh, one full-time person, that's Ernie Mentola, to take care of all of the grass cutting. The council authorized the hiring of two part-time personnel to work in concert with Ernie to make sure that the ditches and the grasses, grasses are kept, kept away the most possible. When, in my conversations with all of them, the goal that I gave them was if somebody on Sixth, Sixth Street or Second Street wants to know when their ditch is gonna be cut, only thing they should need to do is contact the local authorities, say, hey, when are you guys scheduled to mow out the front?
Now, they should start on the south end of town and systematically do one street at a time. You can get an idea of how long it's gonna take, and then you can tell that person, well, right now, we're on such and such street, and by my calculations, it's gonna be three weeks.
And that's the direction that they were giving.
Not jump all over town like I see them do. Go over there, cut this little bush, mow this little area over here. Start in one spot and fix everything and do it systematically. Don't jump all over town and drive around, drive the trucks around all day long.
That's the direction that they were giving, uh, right after the elections, when I sat down, sat down with the maintenance department. So, you'll see, you'll, the community's gonna see a huge difference in that this year versus last year. I think it's gonna be more efficient. Um, you're gonna have two part-time people and one full-time person Monday through Friday. That's what they do, is take care of, take care of the grasses and the ditch lines and trees and whatnot.
Typically speaking, there's, um, two schools of thought on, on clearing, clearing the ditches as well. You know, cutting the trees, you lose stability, bank stability. And when you, when you, but you increase flow capacity.
That's why I haven't cut my tree down there at the shop, because that maple tree's the only thing holding the soil back.
So, you know, by, I, I'm, I believe in the flow line or in the channel, the tree is probably not providing any stability and, and it's.
Yeah, not in the middle of the creek, it's not providing no stability, it's hindering flow.
But when you get on the edges or on the banks, high banks, you know, you, there's kind of a trade-off there. So be aware of that as well.
And that's something that, you know, on a case-by-case basis, they're gonna look at with, with each one.
Hey. Can you, can you add and reduce, uh, speed of the flow depending on how you build the creek, just like it's in rivers, you know, where.
You can put in energy dissipation to where it actually would flow into like a dam structure, stop and then over top it.
Yes.
Right.
And those are all things that, yeah, I think those are all things that Ernie can quickly address with those. Uh, the issue about the riser, it's, it's a simple fix.
So, you know, why didn't Robbie do it? I'd like to know why something so simple he can't do.
I don't have an answer for it.
I like Robbie, always have, but you know, when he don't do his job, I get hurt. Because he's hired, is, what's his title, ma- maintenance superintendent or what is it? He's the boss, though, right?
Yes, he is the boss.
Whenever I ask him to do something so simple as put a riser on a manhole cover, he ought to be able to do it. And then he's rid of me, I'm the problem, I'm gone. Instead of just creating more problems for himself, for me to come down here and chew him out in front of everybody down here, I don't wanna do that.
Well, I can tell you tomorrow morning, the riser will be ordered.
He should have ordered it the day I told him about the problem.
Yep, but I can't, I can't reverse the clock, but I can fix it.
You can hold him accountable and make sure he performs.
That, that we can and will do.
And I'm gonna skip the fire hydrant leaks, because we, people don't wanna stay down here and listen to me gropping all night long. So we're gonna skip that, because I'll put that on next month's agenda, which I got another, uh, seven or so to go that I could do.
It's okay.
I tell you what I'm gonna do, I'm, I'm, I'm cutting off what I wanna talk about tonight, because it's getting late, I got other things, I'll put it on next month's.
Okay. How about, how about Mike, uh, later this week, let you and I get together and.
I'd be more than happy to get together with anybody, I just wanna get along. The only other thing I gotta say is I'm cutting this all out, somebody needs to go over and look at South Pearl. The two culverts over there, me and you discussed about it, it's dangerous, it's very dangerous.
And I was told, um, that you went down on Sunday, those were jetted out to follow on Wednesday.
No, they couldn't have been.
Those wasn't.
No way, I just went over there before I come to this meeting.
Then, then we must be.
This far in, Sean, this far in, that's because the water was turbulating, and it went in, cleaned out the first three or four foot area. I had a probe that I stuck in there and I couldn't get it past four foot. That's, that's, they didn't do that. I'm telling you, they never done it. I just went over, looked at it before I come to this meeting.
What I'd like to do, Mike, is get with you, I wanna, and I wanna go personally go see it, and because.
Two, thirty-three foot long fifteen inch concrete, another is thirty-three feet long ten inch corrugated. This, right there by her. What I seen was Saturday night, when I was looking, going around town, I got a soda, Casey's coming around the corner, looked down there, and I thought, oh, what the heck is that? A rooster tail of water this high. That means it's hitting something, jumping up. Well, the very first thing I thought, a water main broke. Had to be that. Well, I pulled up in there, I saw it was a ditch problem, the culvert, well, it was, it was terrible. Rain was bad. So I said, you know, I'll just come back tomorrow, heck with, with this. And went, and I, that's the problem I found. It's been neglected for years. And Daryl Alexander right there can attest to what hydroplaning is, right there. You know what happened? Everybody that, that knows him knows what happened. I don't want that to happen to anybody else over there.
Absolutely. Um, I'll get with you, uh, this week, and we'll go take a look at it.
John, we talked about that Jason Campbell down here, he's not here, over there on Sixth and Oak. Where it's, it's coming down there, we talked about that culvert across there, to take that water away from running into his garage. Is that something that we can find on here, Glenn?
You guys approve it, and we can put it in, or.
That, I know that's part of the problem we're gonna talk about. I know we talked about it before, and solved it. Getting, getting something done.
The case there, guys, is you got a creek, not really a creek, I'm gonna say a large ditch, starts up at, um, the shoe factory. Close to the east, comes through there, crosses lines, lines drive Ballpark Road. There's a pretty large culvert over at, at Ballpark Road, continues to the east. And when it gets to Jason Campbell's house, there's no culvert, it just hits a road. And kind of goes to the ditch a little bit on Oak Street, but across his yard, there's, there's no storm culvert or of any kind under that road.
Anyway, I'm gonna thank you all for your time, and I'm gonna sit down, because I'm done talking.
Mike, thank you. Never been touched. I don't believe.
Thank you for your time, Andrew.
And you know, it's.
Take all this to us.
Sorry, everybody, you know, a lot of people have to work tomorrow, and I know what it's like, but I feel a lot better, and we'll see what happens next council meeting, and I got, I got seven more things to put on there. I'm not done.
All right. Uh, John, in reference to the Jason Campbell issue. I'd like to take a look at, take a look at it with you.
Okay. I think I meant Paul and Jimmy down there, we only had one fix, and that's the only fix I know we can do, honestly.
It's the culvert underneath the road.
And it's gonna run kinda at an angle across the street, hit a ditch that we can discharge to. The only way through there that, that we could find, really.
Well, that's.
Probably forty.
Then I think we, we just need to put our hands together and figure out the calls and, uh, see, see how much it can cost to fix the problem.
The size of the pipe we looked at was not the size we wanted, but it's the size we have to go with because of, uh, we had cover issues. We got a daylighted pipe in a ditch that's existing and it's concrete, so it, but it beats what we have now, for sure. It's better than what we have now. We were looking at about, uh, I think eighteen inch is what, what I believe we looked at at that, that location and daylighted it in a, in an existing concrete lined ditch.
How quickly can it be done? How quickly can it be done?
About six years or always.
I mean, if that's your only job, you, you would have to do it in a day, because you're gonna have the road closed. It, when you start the project, it, it needs to be done that day, because you're gonna, you're going to close the road in the process of, of putting that pipe in.
I believe that was fixed at one time, but it wasn't fixed correctly.
That, that.
So the gravel, everything went off and the pipe was just showing. And Marilyn and I saw it ourselves. Um, Jason was there.
Are you talking about his house?
No, it's ruined, the guy was ruined.
Okay. I've never seen a pipe in that.
It's, I think they're gravelly.
Right. This is, um, a roadway culvert. It's not in a drive.
John, let's, well, let me play it this week and fix the problem.
Look at that one?
Yeah, look, see, see what's gonna take, and put some numbers behind it. That way the council has a better understanding of, uh, the cost impact that it's gonna. That way the council has a better understanding of, uh, the cost impact that it's gonna, gonna be. They were talking about closing the roadway now, but we won't for time. And then make sure that we notice the public appropriately, uh, before we do something like that. It's not something we're gonna jump into tomorrow morning. Let's, let's get a plan and get done with it. We can get that knocked down. Next thing on the agenda is Anita Cross, Mrs. Cross, who you heard? Okay, this is Donnie Gray. Mr. Gray, come on up.
Anyway, how, how my deal started out, Anita Cross contacted me that she had a sewer problem, it's a problem. And anyway, I, I should start out here, I'm Donnie Gray, owner of Donnie Gray's Equipment. And she had contacted me to come and see if I could fix the problem she had. Anyway, I showed up, but there, there was sewer coming out of the cleanout. And I told her I think it's something that we can fix and she wanted an estimate and everything on it. Anyway, she was, which I couldn't give her an estimate, 'cause I did not know which way we was gonna have to go. She was talking about thirty-foot drop or a five-foot drop.
Right.
And most people, I think, knows where this happened at. Anyway, she helped me go ahead and proceed with it, that I think she had been given just so many days to do something now.
You know, essentially, uh, uh, the council should have an invoice here. It took you roughly two days to finish, to complete the project. Most of the council members have seen the video footage, is that accurate? Okay.
And I do have the video.
You do have the video here?
Yes.
Would any of the council members like to see the video footage of Mr. Doyle, have you seen it? Okay, that, yep. Um, and what we're, what we're looking at here is essentially-
I said it, but I'm not sure what I said. That's what I say, I saw it, but I'm not sure what it was really, you know, you don't know professional.
Council, if you wanna come around here.
Right there's where the maintenance will, and we're backing out.
You're going up the four-inch line.
Yep.
Where's the water?
There is no water we had drank. I had ran a, um, commercial snake in there and I hit resistance at forty-five feet. Well, I'm thinking that I'm in the line pulling down Ellen. I thought it went down there and went good.
That's what we thought.
It did. This line right here is twelve foot, runs north twelve foot, then turns, no, runs west twelve foot, then turns north twenty-two foot and connects in on Red Bud.
Is that, um, how'd you get in there? Did you cut the line to, to get the camera in there or certain-
I disconnected that cleanout, that was leaking.
Okay.
When I disconnected there, I started running the line, 'cause normally what I do is run the line.
Right.
As far as I go, I'll drill a hole in the top, if no water comes out, I clog it.
Go that way.
So that was my idea, where I go twelve foot and I find a rubber boot onto this cast iron, a ridge cast iron. So I, I thought, well, it's taking water here, so I took it apart at the cast iron and, um, in the meantime, I'd already shut the water and the sewer all, you know, coming out of the-
Right.
Well, I'm thinking, yep, it's still my problem, it's between here and down there. So I ran a power snake in there at, um, forty-five feet, I could get resistance. Well, I finally get, which line's only cutting an inch out of it. I finally get enough thread for line drains, but drain slowly. Well, I thought, well, it's still my line. So I'm getting ready to start. I decided to move out in the street and cut the pavement and the new connection. So this is at, like, at two o'clock that evening, I thought, line gonna start digging this street out at two o'clock, we'll come back, hey, call them, I'm gonna start over. I'll come back next morning, pull the pavement off behind the main water line, which is way closer to sewer line, I thought it was, I mean, they're just side beside. We came in, get a shovel. And, uh, I thought, well, I've cut the old pavement. So I'm gonna see if my grade was right, so I reached over there to pull the ditch down, said it's great, right, sewer's coming out, yes. That hole, it had filled all the water. And the houses are unconnected, and you don't think connection to it at all. And it's coming out, apparently good rate. I said, there's a problem here, it ain't. Well, that's when we started trying the power snake again, well, we had to start draining. Then I called Josh, I said, I want you to go through my line with your camera. I don't think that I've got a problem in my line, I think it, the main's stopped. Well, he comes over, well, it's clogged again, he'll always bash me for the water, well, we tried to go through it, you can't see nothing in the water, it's impossible. So that's when I power snaked it again, took about hour and a half to drain mine, and that's when he went in and done this for me. But then, I told him, then I realized we're in the main. So I said, just go in the main, see what will find it. We went ahead, got twelve foot going, so we did the clog in the main. It was gravel, silt, and have you seen that black crude? Looks like crude oil. Well, that's what we ran into, it's fact it was a matic clogging the camera. So we pull back out and the city brings a jet truck in, we go in this line. Go down to the clog with the jet truck, he turns it on, it's just blowing water back on this main. Well, finally got to blowing that crude oil. Well, I call crude oil, it's crude sewer, well, it's dirty, and I said, you're doing some good now. So I walked down to the manhole at the thirty feet, still fairly water moving there, but we started getting. And that's when I realized, John, that the main that's coming down is down Red Bud. Then we ended up with, um, I'm just saying thirty to forty percent flow what it should've been, there's still a problem in that main down there. My suggestion on it is go up there to that manhole, it's about five hundred feet above it. If not, we'll have the same problem.
And essentially, uh, what we're, what we're here tonight on with Mrs. Cross. Mrs. Cross wrote you a check for twenty-one hundred dollars.
That's correct.
For the work that you performed for.
Yes.
And you're here representing her, her behalf, I've, I've also spoken to Mrs. Cross. Mrs. Cross is, uh, requesting a reimbursement from the city for the amount of, uh, essentially for the, the work that was performed. We've seen, um, Donnie was kind enough to, to share that video with us, and thank you for that. Uh, we've got, uh, have you all seen this? Do you all have a copy of that? Okay. With that, uh, at this point, this is up to you all, as far as which way you wanna go with this, and, uh-
What about the part that is at her house, her, her part of the land? Usually, the person that's responsible for their piece of land, they pay for that part.
Thing about that is, Donnie would have to delve toes up. If the problem was, if our problem, if we had run that jet truck to five hundred feet up above and done that first, Donnie would have to delve her part of the land. That's my feeling on it. If the problem was in, in her line, then I think she would be responsible for the part.
Where's, is John out there?
Yeah.
Where do you think, John? How does, you're, you're a person that represents us.
Well, the, I guess the long story is, is, you know, we, we were, I was caught up to the point until the main turned and went to Red Bud, uh, or the, not the main, but the, the latter. I was under the impression from previous people out there and the information that I was given, that the main continued west and right off into Elm Street. Thirty-foot deep dove off into a main that we have in Elm Street. And now after the guys dug it up, it's went to Red Bud. And, and cut in there. And I don't know if they ever camered Red Bud prior to, you know, um, this, or ever flushed it or looked to see if it was flowing? Or if they, everybody just said it was down there. I will tell you, if the blockage is in your main, and your main is causing the issue, um, I think as a city, I would probably feel like, you know, uh, we were responsible for that. I, I do, I believe that.
If nothing else, will the tie go to the runner?
Yeah, right. Um, so I, I didn't see any footage saying Red Bud was blocked, I didn't see any footage saying that it wasn't blocked either. I tend to believe this man, so, you know, I don't think he's, he, he's trying to get one over, um-
You can believe, you can believe-
Yeah, you know, and I, I, uh-
Yeah, I was there Tuesday.
I believed John till an hour before we came, it went down.
We were going that way. You know, so, and that's what people had told me in the past and-
And what got me is, uh, and I thought I was still in that line because of the forty-five feet.
Right, still going.
When we went, uh, when we went-
We got a five hundred feet dark.
Twelve and twenty-two and hit the main. I said, it's a hundred and ten down here. We put the main here, but then when we put the jet truck in, that's where we started getting the flow coming down Red Bud.
See how hard to find out?
Just to this, uh, I just gunned probably fifteen to it. So that you can put a jet truck in it. I didn't go by the, the, the jet, like, you know, the jet truck, you know, down there. 'Cause that cast will handle.
If he charges you guys any money, you need to find out exactly how he charges.
We're not talking about him, right now.
At this, at this point-
About us.
At this point, this, the invoice that was, that Mr. Ray submitted to Ms. Cross, which was subsequently paid, uh, was for twenty-one hundred dollars. What we need to decide, uh, we've heard some pretty good, uh, testimony from, you know, some very reputable people that we may share some culpability in this. Uh, as far as we as a city, uh, with our lines. What we need to decide is, uh, how much, if any, are we willing to reimburse Mrs. Cross on this, uh, on this issue? You know, the, uh, she, she fixed the problem once she was given a notice by the city. They got into it, they found out, okay, the line keeps jank, keeps stopping up, they're at the city main. There's obviously an issue here somewhere. So I guess what, I need you guys to help, help us with is, what Mrs. Cross has expressed to us is, uh, she would like reimbursed for that. Because she does not feel that if the city's drains were draining appropriately, there would've been an issue to begin with, and she wouldn't have had to write a check for twenty-one hundred dollars. So I think that's what she, what she would be asking for.
Well, I think, from my scene, what I'm told, I'm pretty sure that this falls on the city.
Okay, uh, for the twenty-one hundred? Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, that's been seconded by Betty, uh, to reimburse Mrs. Anita Cross, uh, two thousand one hundred dollars for the work, for the sewer work on, uh, Red Bud. Roll call, please.
Uh, Betty Kilgus.
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle.
Yes.
Marilyn Timmons.
Yes.
Paul Watson.
Yes.
Effie.
Yes.
Ask if you pay, uh, Anita Cross for the one hundred dollars, five hundred.
I will be contacting Mrs. Cross and letting her know that, um, just here, here directly. Mr. Ray, thank you for taking the time to come to the place.
One thing I, I really wanna express, that it needs a jet truck run down through there, down Red Bud. If not, we're gonna be right back, and I think shortly into the same problem.
Now, he did tell us that earlier today, we better listen to him.
John, uh-
Donnie, appreciate it.
Location I have with Robbie tomorrow morning. And we can get that mark knocked out quickly.
I could get a little inside Zen Bar through the main, and, um, when they wind the truck up, they back out on us, back up our cast iron.
Next thing on the agenda, Mr. Josh Lacklewitz is requesting water and wastewater short school training in Jefferson City. Uh, it costs us, uh, one day, it's seventy-five dollars, all training must be approved by the city council prior to. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove Mr. Lacklewitz's training.
And the compensation is at seven, it's at for seventy-five dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Mr. Lacklewitz's attended training, this was seconded by Effie. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? This, that passes, Mr. Lacklewitz is approved. At this time, we've reached the end of our open session. The council will go into closed session per revised Missouri statute six ten four zero two one, legal personnel and real estate. Uh, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go from open session into closed session. The matter is made by Watson, seconded by Doyle.
My apologies, fair warning.
Betty Kilgus.
Yes.
Jimmy Doyle. Marilyn Timmons. Paul Watson. Effie. Nine twenty-eight, we are closed session.